Yeah, we will no longer have any children at Club Boulevard.
Wow.
Wow.
End of an era.
Yeah, it is.
One minute, one minute to air. You've had kids at Club Boulevard for, what, 12 years or something?
Yeah, yeah, almost like a decade, yeah.
Thirty seconds. Now.
Good afternoon. I want to call this special city council meeting to order at 3:00 on June the 10th, and I want to welcome everyone who's with us today, either whatever way in which you are viewing this meeting, and I certainly want to welcome my colleagues. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Shul.
Here.
Mayor Protam Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Caballero.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Present.
Councilmember Middleton.
Here.
Councilmember Reese.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and let me just say that you came up with a very interesting shade blue.
That was psychedelic, man.
That must have been very hard to achieve, but it looked great. Okay, thank you. We're now going to go to announcements by the council, and I have a couple of things that I want to raise that have attachments here, things that I've talked to you all about before, but just want to make sure that go over today. I'll go ahead and do mine, and then if there are other announcements, happy to have them. The first is a resolution in support of national action on reparations. I wanted to just, you'll see that it's attached here, I had previously emailed it to you. We have had, Deidreana has also been involved in this, and we've had great discussions with Sandy Darity and Kirsten Mullen, whose book is out, and as you all will remember, I discussed this in my State of the City. The idea here is to support national legislation on reparations, which is currently pending in Congress, and the idea is also not just to support it, but to get other people involved in supporting it, and potentially other municipalities and institutions. So I wanted to put that out there. I'm not asking for a vote today, but would like to go ahead and put it on our agenda for June the 15th. Wanted to hear if there was anyone who had any thoughts about that. Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate you taking my idea and moving it forward. I just wanted to add that I noted with the splitting out of the conversation that I also would like to bring forward a Juneteenth resolution in recognition of the 1619 project and the work that's been done to highlight the history of African Americans in this country. And so I just want to make sure that I also include that that piece has been pulled out of the reparations resolution, and it'll be separate, but the two of them go together, and so that would also be included on Monday.
Councilmember, that sounds good. So once you have that, if you'll circulate that to us, that'd be great, and we can get that on the agenda for the 15th. And without objection, I'm going to have these on consent. Is everybody okay with that? I see some thumbs, and good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to the next item, which is also under announcements, which was the email I sent last week prior to our last meeting regarding the Housing Bond Implementation Committee. And you all, we discussed this quite a lot prior to COVID-19, but I hadn't taken any action on it after everything was happening, but we've been hearing from a lot of people and our staff that they'd really like us to get going on this, and so I sent you all this outline again last week. The, and what I'd like to do today is go ahead, suspend the rules and vote, and to initiate this process, so we can go ahead and get the bylaws written and get all the things needing to happen that need to happen. The key elements of this are that the committee will have a six-year time limit, will sunset after that time unless presented by the council. That the members of the committee will serve three-year terms, and each can serve two terms if reappointed. The committee will consist of 13 members, including chairs. The committee will be quarterly. The committee co-chairs will report to the council every six months at a work session, and the committee will consist of the two co-chairs, six at-large representatives, and five people representing the following categories. You can read these here, but they are: DHA resident, another resident of affordable housing, formerly homeless individual, a member with expertise in real estate development, and a member with expertise in housing finance. So that's my recommendation, and would like to go ahead and move that forward so that our attorneys can get thinking about writing the bylaws, and so am now interested in hearing any discussion or thoughts that you may have. Councilmember Freeman, and then Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I apologize, I hadn't seen the email until now, and I appreciate you putting forth more around who would be on the committee. I would, however, like to make sure that it's noted that communities in partnership is also doing affordable housing in Durham and has been very active in East Durham, and I would love to see how they could also be included in this conversation. I know that Aliya Rachman has been leading on that front, and I don't think she's been included in your conversations around the bond, so I just want to make sure that I do raise that up.
I appreciate that, and if you would connect us, that would be great. I'd appreciate it. Yeah, Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to weigh in briefly about the representation. Given that DHA properties are a significant chunk of the spending that we're going to do on the bond in the next, from the bond in the next few years, I thought it might be helpful to have more than one DHA representative on the board. I don't know if the number of, the number of representatives listed, like if you feel strongly about the maximum, but maybe we could have one or two more DHA reps come from the six at-large representatives.
I don't feel strongly about the number. If we wanted to go up to 15, add a DHA, another DHA resident, and then just another at-large, that would be fine. I would be happy to go either way.
I'll propose that we have three DHA residents and four at-large.
Three DHA, so I'll tell you that my concern about that is that we have a whole lot of people that are very interested in participating from lots of different constituencies. So, you know, I mean, Deidreana just mentioned somebody. We have Durham County has been, you know, been dying to know when the applications come in. The Durham Committee has been the same. So I think if we limit ourselves to four at-large, we're not going to be happy. I think we're not going to be, you know, doing the, getting the representation, the wide representation that we want.
Okay, well, I'll modify that to six at-large and three DHA representatives with a total, so increasing the total size of the board to 15 members.
I'm all right with that. And when you say representatives, you mean residents?
I mean residents, yeah.
Okay. Other thoughts?
I appreciate the Mayor Protam's effort to try and make sure that this board is, the committee is a representative of DHA residents. Thank you.
Any other thoughts? Okay, then I'm going to ask for a motion that we suspend the rules and vote on this.
I'll move we suspend the rules and vote.
By Mayor Protam, and seconded by Councilmember Caballero, that we suspend the rules and vote on this item. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Shul.
Aye.
Mayor Protam Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Caballero.
Aye.
Councilmember Freeman.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
I vote aye.
And Councilmember Reese.
Aye.
Thank you.
The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously. Now, the item is the same as you will see there in the attachment, except that the motion is to include making a 15-member group with three DHA representatives instead of one.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Been moved by Mayor Protam and seconded by Councilmember Middleton, that we approve this item as I have described it. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Shul.
Aye.
Mayor Protam Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Caballero.
Aye.
Councilmember Freeman.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
I vote aye.
Councilmember Reese.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously. And Madam Attorney, you and I can talk soon about the bylaws and how y'all want to move that ahead.
Sounds good, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I do have one more item, which is the appointment of our Go Triangle representative, the Joint City-City-Co-Triangle Representative. As you all know, I have been planning to appoint Stelphany Williams to the seat formerly held by Helen Recal. And normally, I make all these appointments to Go Triangle and these other boards of our own members, but I realized that I really should bring this to you all today because Stelphany is not a member of our council. I hadn't thought about that ahead of time, but I did start thinking about it last week. Ellen is, has resigned from the Go Triangle Board, effective July 1st, and rather than just simply appointing Stelphany, just to make sure that we've crossed all the Ts and dotted the Is, I wanted to bring her a recommendation for her appointment to you all. As you know, I'm the city appointment, Wendy is the county appointment, and we have one joint appointment. So I'm going to recommend that to you, and I'm going to also ask first if there's any discussion, and then we'll, with your permission, we will suspend the rules and vote. Any discussion? All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Middleton.
As I just want to, for the record, say, I think Dr. Williams is an excellent choice. I've had opportunity to interface with her a number of times since she's been at Duke. I think I would be remiss, because folk in the community are still talking about just the historical, I was going to say drama, but the historical event we went through regarding transportation relative to Duke with the light rail. And I know that some people are still thinking about that, and I just want to, I think we should assure of the public that Stelphany is conversant on how important transportation is to us as a community, as a county, as a city, that she's sensitive to all constituencies that we represent, that this isn't just us merely kind of just giving Duke more sway or more influence over our affairs as a county or a city, but this is an actual conscientious person who's sensitive, who knows the history, but is forward-looking and understands how important our transportation nexus is to us and will act in our best interests as well. So I thought it was just important, because people are still talking to me about Duke and transportation. You put those two things together, and for some folk, there's a very visceral response. So I think she's an excellent choice. And I just wanted to say that on record. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other comments? Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you. I appreciate Councilmember Middleton's comments. I won't beat that dead horse. But I also can speak to the work that Stelphany Williams has been doing in the community. I can appreciate why, I can appreciate why you would choose her as a member of the Go Triangle Board. I think she would be phenomenal. However, I do have a problem with moving it through without having some conversation or a little bit more conversation. I would like it to be something that we actually share out a little bit more widely than a special meeting, because it seems, it just seems like this isn't something that falls into, you know, into the line of normal business, and so it's just a little off. I just want to make sure that I've given it the right time. So I wouldn't be able to support it today, but I understand if everyone else does. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any more comments? Okay, so I will entertain a motion that we suspend the rules and vote.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Middleton, seconded by Mayor Protam, that we suspend the rules and vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Shul.
Aye.
Mayor Protam Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Caballero.
Aye.
Councilmember Freeman.
Nay.
Councilmember Middleton.
I vote aye.
Councilmember Reese.
Aye.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protam. Thank you, Madam Clerk. The ayes have it, the motion passes five to one. Now I'll accept a motion to appoint Stelphany Williams to the Go Triangle Board.
So moved, Mr. Mayor, with honor.
Been moved by Councilmember Middleton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mayor Protam. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Shul.
Aye.
Mayor Protam Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Caballero.
Aye.
Councilmember Freeman.
Yea.
Councilmember Middleton.
I vote yea.
Councilmember Reese.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you, everyone. The motion passes five to one. Thank you all for indulging me today with those items. It's one of these situations where we're, our meetings are different than they used to be, and I appreciate you all. Are there other announcements by members of the council? Councilmember Freeman.
I would just like to congratulate my colleague, Councilmember Caballero, for being appointed to the NPO Board. I think that's a great addition to the two of you, being the mayor and Charlie Reese on the board, and I appreciate Councilmember Caballero taking on the additional charge to serve on that board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'm looking forward to being off of that board when we get our new council appointment. But it is a great board, it's just a demanding board, but thank you very much, and I agree. Any other announcements? All right. Then we will move to our next item, which is priority items by the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. No priority items from the city manager's office.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Attorney.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Madam Mayor Protam, members of the city council. The city attorney's office has one priority item today that is a closed session to discuss litigation. The closed session exception is NC General Statute 143-318.11A3 for Attorney-client Consultation, and this relates to an eminent domain case that Senior Assistant City Attorney Fred Lamar is currently handling, and he needs guidance from the council.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. You all have heard the priority item by the city attorney. Can I have a motion to approve that item?
Move approval.
Second.
Been moved by Madam Mayor Protam, seconded by Councilmember Freeman. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Shul.
Aye.
Mayor Protam Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Caballero.
Aye.
Councilmember Freeman.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
I vote aye.
Councilmember Reese.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you, Madam Attorney. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously, and we will take that item up at the end of our meeting.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, any priority items?
Good afternoon, Mayor and city council. The city clerk's office has no items.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to our general business agenda, item 25, request to initiate a neighborhood protection overlay for Forest Hills, and we'll hear from staff.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of council. I am Scott Whitehead from the Durham City-City Planning Department. This item is related to a petition submitted by the Forest Hills neighborhood to initiate a neighborhood protection overlay. The petition was submitted in 2018, and the Joint City-City Planning Committee voted to prioritize the application for the 2007 NPO guidelines, as it was the only petition the planning department received. The department indicated at that time that due to staff resources needed to work on a new comprehensive plan, the NPO cannot be included in the FY19 Department Work Program, and the JCC-PC agreed. The department did request $50,000 in the FY20 budget cycle to hire a third-party consultant to develop the NPO, but those funds were not included in the final adopted budget. The JCC-PC voted to reprioritize the application at the neighborhood's request, prevented it from being administratively withdrawn in December, and that would keep it active for another 18 months. Since the comprehensive plan will still be under development for the next two years, the department does not believe we will have the staff resources available to work on the NPO, at least until that is finished. So funding for a third-party consultant would be the only way for any work to begin. The reason for this request is to ask council to determine if the development of this NPO should be a priority, and if so, to direct the administration to provide the necessary resources. The alternative would be to vote to not initiate the NPO, which would withdraw the application and would allow the neighborhood representatives to resubmit it at a later time when we have the resources available to complete it. The planning staff recommends that the council vote to not initiate the NPO for the reasons that we stated in the agenda memo, primarily because the proposed elements to regulate that were provided in the application are in direct conflict with several of the policy directions that we have received from council on some recent decisions. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Whitehead. Good to see you, virtually.
Mayor.
Thank you for your report. I'm going to now, you've heard the report from staff. This is actually not a public hearing item, is it? Open a public hearing that doesn't exist. And I'll, but I'll first ask, are there questions for our staff? Okay. Councilmember Middleton, did you have a question?
I do, Mr. Mayor, and I, you said this is not a public hearing, so we're not going to be hearing from any residents there.
This is GBA, and I was going to ask if, Clerk, if we have anyone to speak to this item, but I was going to see first if councilmembers wanted to have any questions.
I'll reserve, I can, I'll reserve a question if we do have anybody, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Sure. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone who signed up to speak on this item?
We have one person who raised their hand, and I will unmute them. Thank you.
Yes, hello, council. Am I able to be heard?
Yes, I believe this is Ms. Pless.
Yes, it is. Hello, Mayor Shul and members of council. Thank you very much. Yes, I just wanted to call in. I sent in a letter to council on this item addressing how the NPO application and an NPO petition are not the same thing, and how that list of elements that was just referred to in staff's memo, in fact, might not really apply, because again, the application does not prescribe the parameters of the NPO. That would be the business of the petition, which we have not yet been permitted to develop. So I feel that part of that report is a little bit of a cart before a horse in terms of how it's being looked at, and I really just wanted to mention that to council for your consideration. Beyond that, I also wanted to highlight the fact that the timing of this is actually rather prescient, given that recent global events have highlighted the importance of urban forests and green spaces and their impacts on community mental health and physical health during the pandemic. Forests and stream stewardship are taken very seriously in Forest Hills, and our trees and streams are presently under multiple threats from numerous sources. We have a particular text amendment, privately initiated text amendment that's moving forward that includes frankly dangerous amounts of tree and green space reduction. We also have texts that are moving forward that involve removing trees from local historic districts. We also happen to be the home of the most polluted stream in Durham County, and any tree that is lost anywhere near us impacts us and the community at large in many different ways. We have a very complicated and delicate ecosystem here that we work very hard for the sake of the community to maintain. So we just, we would ask for your help and support in allowing us to move forward with this NPO at this time. I know that you have received more than 180 written requests from neighborhood residents in the form of the official petition, and I would ask, please, that you honor each one of those requests and the fact that this is the most robustly supported NPO petition in Durham's history. Thank you very much for all of your work during this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pless, and thank you for being such a consistent and eloquent advocate during this whole process. All right, Madam Clerk, I believe that's the only speaker to the item.
Mayor Shul, that is the only one who has raised their hand.
Thank you. Let me ask now if there's anyone else on this call, anyone listening to this meeting who would like to be heard. If you could raise your hand, the clerk will make you heard. And until I hear that, I'm going to go ahead and call on council members, and I'll start with Councilmember Middleton for any questions or comments that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm going to thank the staff for the work they've done on this issue. I want to thank the caller as well. Colleagues, we've been dealing with this issue for a little while now, and it's come before us, and I sit on the JCC-PC along with the Mayor Protam and Charlie, Councilor Reese. Then, for me, there's just a fundamental fairness issue attached to this matter for me. And I'm not even going to get into the substantive arguments about the merits of green space and the forest area, the actual petition itself. I mean, that will go through the process and be properly adjudicated if the petition goes forward. I wanted to talk about the fairness of the timing of when this first came before us. And I appreciate the staff's emphasis on having resources and bandwidth to deal with the petition. But when this was, when this first came before me on JCC-PC, the argument was not, the primary argument wasn't staff bandwidth. It was, we were anticipating some changes coming up in the UDL. We had EHC coming up. We had some, we knew that we were going to be looking at the way we deal with land issues in Durham. And in anticipation of that, we were going to put the kibosh, or it was at least being considered to put the kibosh on this particular NPO application, because we were anticipating new rules. Although the residents had submitted their application according to the deadline and standards that were in force now, and I was concerned about some ex post facto type of action being taken against the residents who played by the rules that we had in place at that time, and I thought there was a fairness issue to penalize them because we were anticipating some new, a new landscape coming down the road, which we had not codified yet. So, for that reason, I, I lean heavily towards prioritizing the application. I don't, I, and I, I heard that we didn't, we didn't put money in the budget for the staff, and if staff feels that's the only way to...
Good afternoon, City Clerk's Office. Diana speaking.
Continuing. If it, we didn't put money in for the staff to, to work on it. I get that, but the primary argument that I recall was not staff bandwidth. It was, we were anticipating EHC, we were anticipating the comp plan and, and all other things. And for that reason, I, I, I'm still concerned because they, they, they made the cut, they, they, they applied under rules and standards that we had in place at that time. So, I, I, I've still got some issues with fairness. I'm curious to hear from my colleagues. So, I'm, I'm leaning towards, and of the mind, to still prioritize this application, and whatever the merits of the application are, that, that, to give them their fair chance to have the hearing during, you know, the, the fully, full vetting adjudication process of an NPO. But I, I am, I have a concern about fairness to the residents of Forest Hills since they did start this process according to a deadline that we had established, played by rules that we had established. So, and I know some things have happened since then, and for, and, and for us now to look at some of the decisions we made as a council and talk about the NPO being consistent with decisions we made is precisely the concern I had when this issue first came before us, this ex post facto kind of measuring where this NPO application stands against things we've done since they applied under the original rules, original standard. So, those are my concerns. I'm, I'm, I'm curious to hear staff's response to that and my colleagues as well, and I look forward to the discussion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councilmember. Mr. Whiteman, could we ask you to address those concerns?
Certainly, and Councilmember Middleton is correct. This application was submitted. The petitioners did follow all of the rules that were in place at the time. I think there were, yeah, there were several, several reasons why we, as staff, told the JCCPC that we couldn't work on it. The, having the staff resources was one. Also, there, there were some things in the works, like expanding housing choice, which this would be basically in conflict with. And then also, we, at the same time, were proposing some changes to the NPO process, to the UDO, which is later on your agenda today, to can fix some of the issues that we've found with the NPO process through the, our experience through the last several NPOs.
So, I think it would be important to discuss in more detail what you put in the memo regarding the, the ways in which this is in conflict with expanding housing choices. I think that, I see Mr. Young, he may also have some comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Certainly would co-sign what Mr. Whiteman just said, but also add to Councilmember Milton's question or, or comments that we are, as you well know, in the midst of the comprehensive plan update. And of course, that's a citywide look at growth and development issues, ensuring that there's an alignment of policy and that the, candidly, that the costs and benefits of growth are shared equally and fairly across neighborhoods in the community. So, I think, we think that the, the, the concerns expressed in the application can be well addressed through the comprehensive plan process, and we do feel like there's at least some redundancy of effort that, that goes into an NPO process. So, just wanted to get that in. That isn't our memo, but I wanted to get that on the record in addition to what Mr. Whiteman said.
Thank you, Mr. Young, and good to see you as well. If we could, Mr. Whiteman, could you describe the specific ways in which you've, you've talked about the NPO being in conflict with the EHC, with expanding housing choices? I don't want to use too many initials, but if you could describe some of those specific ways.
So, in the smittle that we received, it would limit the residential use to single-family residences only, so that would prohibit duplexes, which were now permitted. It would prohibit flag lots, which would not allow the small house, small lot option. It would, the lot sizes that are in lot widths they are proposing are the exact same as what the current zoning allows, so that would actually have no effect at all, but would pro, as written, would prohibit any of the, some of the, the small lot option as well, and those are the main, those are the provisions that would. There are some other provisions that wouldn't relate to expanding housing choice, but those are the ones that would be affected if they were adopted and as submitted.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, other comments and questions? Councilor Freeman.
Thank you. I would just ask, on an evaluation side, for this neighborhood, exactly how many lots are vacant that we're talking about? And is this limited to new construction? Like, I mean, I think, is this, like, is there a, is this tied to new construction or existing construction? Like, how does this prohibit, I guess, expanded housing choices, is what I'm getting at? I'm not understanding that at all.
So, the NPO can be crafted, since the, the text isn't crafted yet, there's no definitive answer to that. I can say that the, the previous two NPOs that were adopted did apply to both existing development like additions to existing houses and to new development. So, if the lot sizes and flag lots were limited, then that would prohibit any new development that met some of the, the options available that were approved under expanding housing choice.
So, there are flag lots in the neighborhood?
Yeah, the, the flag lots and the minimum lot sizes in particular, and the single-family residential use only.
And would you say that those things could be craft, you're saying they could be crafted into the NPO and reflective of the EHC or expanded housing choices? And I would just like to say that, that my questions and my understanding of how the neighborhood protection overlays work, it's, it is putting the cart before the horse and saying that, that it doesn't allow for E, for EHC or expanded housing choices. And if the community already understands that this is not about preventing duplexes in their neighborhoods, then this is more about making sure that, as Ms. Pless mentioned, that the trees are, the trees that are there are protected and there is a green space, and that the streams are protected. And I think that those are valid points, and I really appreciate the JCCPC in trying to reprioritize this and bring it back. And so, I'm, I'm looking forward to supporting, moving this forward. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, colleagues. I, I just wanna, again, just reiterate for the record, there's no doubt in my mind, everything the staff is going to say substantively, point by point, how this NPO may conflict with EHC, whatever, is gonna be right. I know that. I, I just wanna affirm that. That, that's, my issue is purely one of fairness and purely one of timing. I think if we had said, if we had issued a moratorium on taking applications because we knew we were going to be, we, we, we knew we were doing a comp plan, we knew we were doing EHC, maybe there'd, there'd be some more comfort, but we, we still let folk turn in an application under those rules. And, and, you know, bandwidth is one argument, but if, if we're holding up an application because we anticipated something coming down the road, but we still, you know, did not cut off the allowability of turning in applications, that just, from a fairness point of view, that, that's what I'm, I'm struggling with. I'm not even gonna go into the merits, line by line, the substance of the application, or I'm, I'm bracketing that out for my consideration today. I'm, I'm just talking purely from a fairness point of view to the residents of, of Forest Hills. So, that, that, that's where I am, but no doubt the staff's gonna be right on everything they say, you know, relative, EHC relative to the NPO, NPO line by line. This is about fairness and timing for me. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councilmember. We're going to, Ms. Pless would also like to make another comment, and I'm gonna ask the clerk if she can let Ms. Pless into the room. Ms. Pless, welcome again.
Yes, hello. Am I being heard?
Yes, you are.
I'm so sorry. My, my connection is very awkward. I apologize. Yes, um, oh, sorry. I'm here in reverb. So, yes, I simply wanted to point out, and this was part of my letter as well, that at the time that the NPO application was submitted, that list that is being referred to with such specificity by staff today was presented to us as a required item for the application that was folded in specifically with the understanding that the items on that list would change over time. In other words, these items are not do or die items for the neighborhood. We were told to merely list anything that we might consider working on in the future on that list. And so, I do feel that it is perhaps a bit of a mischaracterization to try to paint the neighborhood into a position where what is on that list represents the definitive body of what our ultimate NPO petition, if it is ever allowed to be written, would read. Please, we would ask for fairness. We would ask for an opportunity. We were told to just list everything in the kitchen sink we could think of, and now I feel like it's being used as a tool against us, and it is difficult. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pless. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a, I have a question for staff. Is there anything in our NPO process that would give residents the impression that submitting an NPO then necessarily leads to staff working on it?
So, there's nothing that says that we will or that we won't. I think there's definitely, the way the process is set up now, it certainly gives that impression, which is one of the reasons why we wanted to make the changes that you'll be considering later. It certainly is a huge resource issue for us. We never know when we're gonna get one, and it, you know, the old West Durham NPO took about 1,600 staff hours to complete, and so, yes, we're looking for, it's, it's a resource issue, so we're looking for guidance from City Council to determine how to best reallocate or to allocate resources to either work on this NPO or continue doing what we're doing.
Thank you. I'm just trying to, I'm trying to parse the fairness question a little bit, which is that in, in my understanding, people submit NPOs, and then the council decides whether staff will work on the NPO. There's no, and they do that knowing that there's no guarantee that the NPO will go forward. Is that an accurate assessment?
That is accurate, yes. It's a, we do not start working on it until it's put into our approved work, work program, which is separate, separate action.
Thank you. I am gonna vote against this item. I don't believe that an NPO in Forest Hills meets our current policy direction on, in this area, which is to increase density and to increase affordability in the urban tier. And Forest Hills is part of the urban tier. I don't think it wise to ask staff to do work on, to do work on an item that is expressly in opposition to all the other work that we're asking them to do with regard to, with regard to housing. And if this item were to, I mean, if this item were to come to us, I don't, I, again, I wouldn't support it. So, I don't support moving it forward, and I'm going to vote against adding it to the work plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmember Caballero.
Yeah, just a clarifying question that I have for staff. Hi, Scott. Just real quick, basically what I'm also hearing is if we voted to approve the, the only way that staff sees doing that work would be to outsource it based on your current work plan that has already been adopted.
That's correct, yes. We would, for the next two fiscal years, to be the case.
And is that where the, was the $50,000, is that what your estimation would be to hire said consulting firm?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Any other questions or comments from Mr. Whiteman? Councilmember Freeman, and then Councilmember Reese.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask, how many other actions in the planning department can the neighborhood actually initiate as a resident in the community?
The only two that we really have are the NPO and the local historic district process.
And, and can you say that the, the limitation on that, is that by city? Is it by state? Is it by federal statute?
Some of it, some of it is local decision. Some of it, as referenced in the memo, the state has made it harder and harder for non-property owners to apply for zoning changes that do not apply to their own property. So, it's definitely not a federal issue. It's more of a, a local decision about how to real, to allocate resources and state decision to make it hard to ask for zoning changes on someone else's property.
And that, and that's in regards to just, you know, you're, what you're saying is the property rights argument has been made, and so folks in the community don't have, don't have an opportunity to ask for or request a neighborhood protection overlay. And that, that has been an overarching factor in this, and why from 2018, I know I've been continuously saying, like, this is, this is, you're leaving folks no opportunity to have say-so on what their neighborhood looks like. And I hear what Mayor Pro Tem is saying about not agreeing, but it's also put in the cart before the horse because no plans have been made about what that NPO would look like. And so, I, I hear Councilmember Middleton in saying, not going into the details, but I feel like it's, it's really unfair that the details are what's being used against this neighborhood. Because if it were a black neighborhood, I would be saying the same things in that it's important to make sure that the people that live around that neighborhood have say-so on what it looks like. And I want to make sure that it's clear that the limitation has been made through the state, and we're carrying it through as if it's the rule here locally, and it's kind of, it's really concerning. And so, I, I just want to make sure that that piece is not left out of this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a question for Mr. Whiteman. It was my recollection at Joint City-County Planning that the reason we, that the reason we were asked to prioritize the NPO application from, by the neighbors was that had we not done that, they would have had to reapply under the new rules. Is that roughly correct?
That is correct, yes.
So, to my mind, thank you, Scott, I appreciate it. To my mind, that was what I recall about the procedural fairness kind of ex post facto concern that I remember from this, from being in Joint City-County Planning, was that we voted to prioritize the application because to do otherwise would have meant that they didn't, that the, that the, that the neighborhood would not have had the opportunity to keep going forward with the process that they began in good faith. And I think one of the reasons I voted to prioritize it was because of that basic fairness and process issue that Councilmember Middleton so rightly brought up, but also to, I guess, hasten the day when we got to this decision point about whether or not to move the application forward and begin the, and ask staff to devote time, energy, and money to developing the NPO application or petition. And from my perspective, it doesn't really matter, at this point in time, what the NPO proposal would eventually contain or not contain. I'm completely agnostic about that. For me, the issue is, we are embarking and have already embarked on our new comprehensive plan. That work is burdened to a considerable degree by the circumstances we find ourselves in with the global pandemic of COVID-19 right now. And to ask our staff to set aside time, energy, and money to work on this... And to ask our staff to set aside time, energy, and money to work on this, when many of those issues are going to be discussed, and the council is going to make decisions about that in the context of the comprehensive plan, or comprehensive plan creation. And for that reason, I just think this is absolutely the wrong time to move forward with an NPO application in the city as we are embarking on the other important work. The, the time, energy, and talent of our planning staff is not infinite. If it were, there were lots of things we'd ask them to do. But it's really important to me that they get this right. And I believe that if done right, that work around the comprehensive plan will incorporate all of the concerns that are being raised by the Forest Hills neighbors right now. And that is where I think the city should be focusing its energy. And so irrespective of what the, what's on the list, I just want to make sure, Ms. Pless, you understand from my perspective, that doesn't color my sense of whether or not this should go forward at all one bit. It's not about what, what might be in a future proposal. It's the fact that, in my opinion, this is exactly the wrong time to be considering any NPO as we ask our staff to do the heavy lifting on the comprehensive plan. I think that's where we need to focus staff. That's where they have told us they need to focus, and, and I want to support that. That's why I'll be voting against the measure then.
Thank you, Councilmember. Are there any more comments by members of the council? Any more comments by members of the council? Did I see Councilmember Milton or no? No, okay. Any more comments by members of the council? Okay, I'll just quickly comment. I'm appreciative of the advocacy by Ms. Pless and others in Forest Hills, and agree that it's, that the, it's a wonderful, it's a beautiful neighborhood, as so many of our neighborhoods are. And I certainly understand her concern about trees and green space and the mentions that she made of future, future tax amendments and so forth that we will be asked to consider. And I just want to say, I hear you about protecting the trees and the green space, and that has absolutely got to be a priority. In terms of the, in terms of this item, I appreciate everybody's comments, and I think they're good, good, good arguments on all sides. I do think that, I'm convinced by Councilmember Reese's comments, and by the Mayor Protem, I am, I think that they, for me, carry the greater weight, but I appreciate everybody's thoughts. All right. I, I'm sorry, I'm now going to ask, that we've been asked to, the, the action that we are scheduled to take here is to adopt a resolution regarding a quest to initiate a neighborhood protection overlay for Forest Hills. The resolution that the staff has recommended to us is a resolution that would deny the initiation of the NPO process. So I will accept a motion on that resolution.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Madam Mayor Protem, seconded by Councilmember Reese, that we pass the resolution recommended by staff to deny the initiation of the NPO for Forest Hills.
Mr. Mayor, I'm confused. Can I jump in real quick? I know in the past, we've gotten advice from our attorney not to phrase motions in the negative. So I'm wondering if we could...
Get a little clarification?
Yeah.
Madam Attorney?
Phrase the motion in the affirmative, yes, that would be correct.
So I, I was, the affirmative would be that we...
Move to approve or move to adopt.
Move to, move to approve the resolution presented by our staff. I just want to, I want to make it clear that that resolution is recommending the denial of the NPO. So there's a motion on the floor that we approve the motion, that we approve the resolution recommended by staff, and it's been seconded, Councilmember Reese.
Can I just get confirmation from our city attorney that, that, that's okay? That we're gonna, we're gonna vote yes in the affirmative on the, on the resolution recommended file? And that's, that's...
Right, so, so the motion should be stated in the affirmative, and what's giving you pause is that the recommendation is stated in the negative? Is that it?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I mean, that's, that's fine. See, you're voting to accept, yes, the resolution, the recommendation.
We're being asked to accept the resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I have one minor quibble about the resolution. And that is, the third and fourth wheresses do not comport with my understanding of where this process sits, given that, that the neighbor, the neighbors never got an opportunity to go forward with the process. We don't really know what the proposed NPO regulations would be. And so if it's friendly to the, to the Madam Mayor Protem, if we could strike the third and fourth wheresses and move forward with just the first two, that would be my preference.
I see our, I see our, I see our, I see our planning director may have a comment.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So there, there, for your convenience and use, there are two alternative resolutions. Attachment four is a resolution for approval. Attachment five is a resolution for denial. So I think whoever makes the motion could refer to the, the specific, there are two separate resolutions provided for your use, and you certainly could amend it as Councilmember Reese suggested.
I think we should redo the motion, does that work?
It will, I'm happy to hear your suggestion.
I move that we deny the request, or I guess that's in the negative, right? I move that we accept the staff's recommendation to deny the request. How's that?
I think that would be acceptable. Mr. Young, you don't need this particular resolution, do you?
I don't, and, and obviously Attorney Rayburg can weigh in, but I think adopting a resolution for denial, which is attachment five in your agenda package, would, would meet the intent of what the Mayor Protem just said.
However, I'm hearing Councilmember Reese wants to get rid of a couple of wheresses in that resolution.
And I believe that's why the Mayor Protem suggested let's skip the resolutions and just go to, we vote to accept the recommendation of staff.
I see, yeah, I, I, there's no, there's no legal reason that that, that resolution is critical.
There's a motion on the floor that we, by the Mayor Protem, that we accept the, the recommendation of staff to deny the NPO for Forest Hills. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any more discussion?
Discussion?
Councilmember Milton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank Councilor Reese and Mayor Protem Johnson. I find their arguments incredibly compelling, and I agree with them. However, I'm gonna be, I guess, voting against it, because I, the threshold for my concern about fairness still has not been passed. I, I don't know what's going to be in this NPO. This is the same neighborhood, by the way, that I voted against trying to get into the suburban tier. So, so I, you know, I, I, I'm mindful of our need for density. I'm mindful of our need to treat all neighborhoods the same. And because I'm mindful that we need to treat all neighborhoods the same, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm still concerned about the timing of the application process. So why, I, I think Councilor Reese and Mayor Protem Johnson are right, one hundred percent. I, I, I still have a concern about fairness. So I regrettably will be partying company with the, my colleagues on this vote, but I think, strange enough, the vote is going the right way. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Are there any other comments? If not, Councilmember Freeman?
Just a note that it might have just been easier to vote nay on the affirmative resolution, and that would have been a lot simpler.
That may be true, but this is the motion that we have. And so I'm, I'm gonna go with it. There is a motion on the floor that we accept the recommendation of staff to deny the, to deny the request to initiate the Forest Hills NPO. It's been made and seconded. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Shul?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Caballero?
Aye.
Councilmember Freeman?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Middleton votes nay.
Councilmember Reese?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The motion passes four to two. Thank you, colleagues, and thank you, Ms. Pless and others in Forest Hills. I know that this is going to be an ongoing process through the comprehensive plan, and we look forward to your participation.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. In the previous vote, we had to suspend the rules, but for this one, we didn't. Is that because it's specifically on GBA?
Yes.
I just want to make sure that that's clear, because it looks kind of awkward.
Thank you. All right, we're now moving to item twenty-three, Annexation Falls Village North Conservation. And this is a JBA public hearing item. And now we'll be hearing from staff.
Good afternoon, Emily Struthers with the Planning Department. I would like to state for the record that all Planning Department hearing items have been advertised and noticed in accordance with the state and local law. And affidavits of notice are on file in the Planning Department. Our request for utility extension, voluntary annexation, and initial zoning map change have been received from Robert Shunk of McAdams for a two-hundred-nine-point-one-nine acre parcel located at seven-thirty-nine Baptist Road and one-seventeen Santee Road. This annexation petition is for an expansion of an existing satellite to the corporate limits. The expansion would be away from the current city limits and into the rural tier and Critical Watershed Protection Overlay. The site is presently zoned residential rural, Falls Jordan Watershed Protection Overlay District B in the suburban tier, and residential rural Falls Jordan Watershed Protection Overlay District A in the rural tier. Staff recommends an exact translation of the zoning designation. Based on an administrative site plan currently under review for a conservation subdivision, development is anticipated to include three-hundred-and-forty-one single-family lots. It should be noted that a separate from this, that separate from this request, applications for rezoning and an amendment to the future land use map have been submitted and are currently under review for a higher density with age restriction. A TIA is required for the conservation subdivision site plan currently under review. But if the future rezoning is approved, the project would not be subject to the TIA identified in the improvements. Giving you that information as context, this is just for the annexation petition. The city-county operational departments, such as Solid Waste, Fire, Police, and EMS, have reviewed this request. Solid Waste and the Police Department identified potential service delivery costs and impacts without adding resources, but those resources will be requested in the future through the annual budget process when the timing and need for the additional resources has been better identified. The Public Works and Water Management Department performed the utility impact analysis for the utility extension agreement and determined that the existing city of Durham water and Sari sewer mains have capacity to serve the project after the completion of the southeast regional lift station. The city of Durham Departments of Transportation and Public Works and City-County Planning are conducting a conditions and cost assessment related to the NC DOT roadways located within east and southeast Durham that are experiencing rapid transition from rural to suburban characteristics. This assessment will determine if the roadways meet current and potential future city standards. This assessment is underway, and a final completion date is not yet identified. Regarding this request, Budget Management Services Department performed a fiscal impact analysis, which determined that the proposed annexation will become revenue positive immediately upon annexation. Should the council act favorably, approval of the annexation petition and the direct translation of the zoning would become effective on June thirtieth, 2020. Staff determines that these requests are consistent with the comprehensive plan and applicable policies and ordinances. Three motions are required for this application. The first is to adopt an ordinance annexing the property and entering into a utility extension agreement. The second is for the consistency statement, and the third is to adopt the zoning ordinance. Thank you, and staff is available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Struthers, good to see you, and appreciate the report. You've heard the report from staff colleagues. I'm now going to declare this public hearing open. First, going to ask if there are any questions for members, by members of the, for staff, by members of the council. Councilmember Freeman?
Thank you, I was just, just double-checking. I noticed that this case had not gone before the Planning Commission, or there were no Planning Commission notes, and so there was no vote. And I was just trying to make sure that it was understood why it wasn't going before the Planning Commission.
Sure, thank you for that question. This request is just for the annexation, and so it would not be heard by Planning Commission. A future rezoning would be heard by Planning Commission prior to being heard by City Council, but for the annexation petition only, it does not go to Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, and I bring that up because what I'm noticing is a continuous evolution of how development is happening in Durham, and that this breakout of how these processes are happening is actually circumventing the Planning Commission, and it doesn't feel like it's wholly honest in its approach. So, thank you. Just wanted to make sure that was clear for the rest of my colleagues.
Mr. Mayor, may, may I comment on that briefly?
Yes, yes, you may, Mr. Young.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Freeman, to your question, certainly Ms. Struthers is correct. There was a, an a resolution adopted by the Planning Commission almost fifteen years ago, I don't remember the exact year, it was two thousand and four, five, or six, where they agreed to not hear cases where it was a direct translational zoning, meaning it's the same zoning designation in the county as it would be in the city. So that's the case here, and we can certainly revisit that, because it is absolutely true that when a property comes into the city, the development potential is much greater because of the availability of utilities. So we can revisit that with the Planning Commission, but just wanted to reassure everyone that we're following a longstanding resolution that Planning Commission adopted in this regard.
And I apologize, Patrick, I appreciate you making the clarification. I'm not trying to imply that the staff is doing anything to circumvent. It just feels a little circumventive, and I understand that that's the way it's been set up from thirteen years ago, and I also understand there's a lot of dynamics in, in the way that cases have been handled. And as we move forward in this cop plan and the conversations around how our neighborhoods are, are developed, and the way that developers are turning our urban, turning our urban tier suburban, and our rural tier is suburban, in hopes of trying to kind of end up that whole density that was spoken about earlier. I just wanted to, to make sure that it's at the forefront of the conver, or at the forefront in how we're looking at these cases, because it come forward as annexations, which seems simple enough. But there's no way for me to measurably account for just how much it's going to cost the city to have this three-hundred-and-forty-one single-family lots online in the city limits. So it's, it's just becoming harder and harder to say yes, that's all, that's what I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other questions for staff? If, if not, I'm going to ask our city clerk to please let me know who is present to speak on this item.
Mayor Shul, we have three speakers. There is Sam Rogers, Jacob Anderson, and a telephone caller. And I believe two at least are proponents, and I'm not sure about the telephone caller. And Barbara Green, oh, excuse me, Barbara Green just raised her hand. She would like to make comments.
Okay. Let me just look here for a second.
Robert Shunk is making a presentation.
Yeah, I was, I didn't hear Mr. Shunk's name mentioned. I knew he was involved in this. Okay, I'm going to ask the, the folk, this is, since this is a public hearing, we have certain requirements, and I'm going to ask those folks who have, who are speaking on this item, or who have raised their hand, if you could let clerk know whether or not you're a proponent or opponent of this item. Madam Clerk, how would they let you know that?
They can put it in the chat, perhaps?
All right.
Mr. Mayor, this is Robert Shunk.
Yes, sir, Mr. Shunk, yes.
I understand, I believe from the Planning Commission last week, that people that are calling in can hit star nine, I think, to raise their hand if they're not on the Zoom call. Is that something the clerk can clarify?
Madam Clerk, is that true? Madam Clerk, is that true?
I'm not 100% on that.
Yeah, I believe it's star nine if you aren't, if you are calling in from a telephone. Okay, Ms. Green, I see is, thank you, Ms. Green, it says that she's speaking in favor. We have Mr. Shuck. If the other, um, folks who are involved in this, uh, speaking on this item, could please, um, could please let us know if you're in favor of the item, in favor of this, um, annexation or opponent. Okay, are you hearing from anyone, Madam Clerk?
It looks as if everyone's a proponent.
All right. Okay, uh, here's what we're going to do. Mr. Shuck, we're going to give you 10 minutes to make a, 10 minutes of time. And then, um, I will give each of the other speakers two minutes, and we will see how we go from there. So, Mr. Shuck, welcome. You have 10 minutes, and you will be timed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Emily, thank you for your thorough report. Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, all city, members of City Council, good afternoon, and good to see you all. Hope to see you all again in person again real soon. Uh, Mr. Mayor, also a big thanks to you for your, you know, leadership on these unprecedented times, most recently. Uh, there's a lot to get through here. So let's get started. Madam Clerk, could you please show the presentation? And hopefully my time will start once the presentation is, is shown.
I'll see how I feel.
Then go to slide two, please. So, so, uh, good afternoon. So, there's a lot to cover on this, follow up from what Emily had said, so. Things we're going to cover is the project history, what we're voting on today with the conservation subdivision. Also speak to, a little bit to the future zoning we're proposing, the neighbor, neighborhood engagement we've had, and why we feel we have, why this is a community benefit. Next slide, please. So, tonight's, or this afternoon's vote is strictly about the 209 acres of annexation, as you see on your screen there. It does propose 341 conservation subdivision lots. For the bigger picture, I want you to know that the area to the south, they're identified by Falls Village Golf Course, was annexed some time ago, has platted lots, and has an existing golf course. Next slide, please. And also, it should be noted that on that same screen there, before she does switch, the blue line there designates the, the difference between the FJA and the FJB boundary. All of our proposed development is in the FJB boundary. So on this slide here, again, this shows the 2003 annexation. The planning for this golf course started in 1998 with the planned residential. It should be noted that this was Durham's first conservation subdivision in 2007, and that is why we also chose to do a conservation subdivision as well. This land area here represents 65% open space. And also want to note that from a policy standpoint, the city-county Planning Department and the Durham Open Space and Trails Commission, DOST, encourages conservation subdivisions, you know, in this area of the county. So while it might be viewed today as a circumvention, you know, we looked at the policy, and we also looked at the fact that there was an existing conservation subdivision, the very first one done in '07. Back in February, March, we have, we receive an approved erosion control plan for the development you see here in yellow, and the CDs are pending, and we hope to start construction this summer on the area east of Baptist Road. Next slide, please. So again, this afternoon's vote is the area in the green. This is a conservation subdivision. Our goal is to ultimately do this as a 55 plus active adult community. As you heard from Emily, there will be a future zoning request that will likely come to City Council later in, later in this year, perhaps early 2021. It will slightly increase the density to about two and a half units an acre. Next slide, please. So in this, in this slide here, it shows the 341 lots. On the western side of the site, you'll see some areas outlined in pink. Those are the areas where we'd like to increase the density at the time of the zoning. The buffers to the west and the north in the FJA boundary will also, will remain preserved, and also the area along Baptist Road will remain preserved as well, limiting the, you know, the impact to Baptist Road. The, the, so we're going from three, we would be going from 341 to about 310 lots, and you can see the mix of lot types there we have. At the end of this, our goal is still to have 77% of the site impervious area, 53% in open space, which translates to, you know, 23% impervious. What is also important on the slide is to note that we're showing a 100-foot wide stream buffers. Typically, when you're under 23% impervious surface, you only need 50-foot stream buffers, so we are, you know, we view this as a compact development, preserving wider stream buffers, and also all of this ponds, all of the storm ponds you see on that screen are constructed wetlands that provide further treatment for stormwater. Next slide, please. This slide here represents, shows a lot of the walkability of the neighborhood. The blue are for sidewalks. The red shows the greenway trails. There's a street greenway trail along Baptist Road, extending up the greenway along, along, north of the site. A greenway easement will be dedicated along the power line easement going further north to one day connect to the, the Mountains to Sea Trail that's around Falls Lake. You can see we're proposing dog parks. We have several pocket parks around the neighborhood, and also a community garden that we've been talking to area residents about perhaps managing it as, as well as, you know, concert with future residents. And then to the bottom there, we're proposing a highly amenitized 18,000-square-foot amenity center that include a pool, tennis, bocce, pickleball, and other indoor and outdoor amenities. Next slide, please. This shows, you know, the whole project, the whole neighborhood in context to one another. Again, to the, the bottom area has already been approved. We have lots that have been platted and right-of-way that's been platted, and construction is slated to start later this summer. There's about 10 miles of sidewalks, five miles of golf cart trails that can double as walking trails in off-peak times, and about a mile of greenway trails. This side shows the clubhouse, the existing golf clubhouse to the south near 98 that, um, you know, hope to, we hope to, you know, provide sewer there that, and they can start fully utilizing the restaurant that they haven't been able to fully use. See a couple other notes here. So from a, from a traffic standpoint, too, what is very important to point out is that the, the active adult community that we're proposing will generate one-third of the traffic of that of a traditional single-family neighborhood, and that's quite as important as we all know some of the impacts to Highway 98 that currently exist. We do, we will be building turn lanes, the various intersections you see there circled in red, and, and are hoping to work with the DOT to provide a traffic light once the traffic is warranted. Uh, lower left-hand corner, you'll see the Neil Middle School in context. Next slide, please, and at this time, Madam Clerk, if you could unmute Jacob Anderson, please, to continue the, to continue the presentation.
Hey, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me clearly?
Yes, we can, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say really quickly that we're very proud to be here. This site is a bit of a long time coming. If there's anyone with staff that can answer the questions, Falls Village Golf Course and the residential surrounding the golf course has been a bit of a, about a, about of a 20-year process. Our team was brought in, uh, my name is Jacob Anderson with Alliance Group. We were brought in about two and a half years ago to try and figure out how to, to make this site, make it what it needed to be. And, and luckily, we were able to pull off something pretty confident is, is going to be a very big success for Durham and this region. Speaking in context, obviously, the site is at 98 and Baptist Road. We're about, you know, 10 to 12 minutes to downtown Durham. We're about three to four miles and five minutes to kind of the main retail in Briar Creek, about 20 minutes to RDU Airport and RTP. And we, we are, you know, near the Rolling View Marina. That's about four miles up the road. We'll speak a little bit to that. And we're also close to some of the retail and such at Sharon Road, as well as Neil Middle School at the corner of Baptist. Next slide, please. So, uh, as we were kind of thinking of the way to present it to you guys in, in a, in a, a way that made you understand that we were thinking about you first as well, we put this map together. So we were fortunate enough with our project and our team to pull in the Del Webb community, and this site will be eventually about 785 lots. That will eventually be a 55 and over age restricted community, which will be housed by Del Webb. The reason why we put this map together is to show you in context a little bit of what's happened in this eastern Durham area. Some good, some bad. We understand there's a lot of growth and pains with that, but we feel like Del Webb Arbors has created a bit of, uh, of an interesting context in this area. Del Webb has really flourished here. It was probably the number one subdivision in the history of North Carolina. Coming out of the downturn, they sold 15 to 25 homes a month, and it just hit that housing market that the, the Triangle and Durham and other communities are still lacking, uh, the senior housing need. But what was remarkable about what Del Webb did here is it, it just spawned a bunch of traditional housing, townhomes, apartments. But I think one of the more important things is it, it just spurred a bunch of non-residential growth. If you go to Briar Creek today, I firmly believe that the majority of the northern part of Briar Creek was enhanced by the Del Webb Arbors. I think one of the discouraging things that we saw as we put this map together is that all of the non-residential growth because of access happened to be on the Wake County side of the line. And so what we're thinking and what we're seeing with what we're going to provide at Highway 98 is we feel like from Highway 98 at Baptist Road to Sharon Road to Miami Boulevard to downtown, we feel like the same non-residential growth that were happening around Briar Creek will happen very quickly. Medical office, banks, apartments, you know, traditional housing, market-rate housing, every type of non-residential component from retail to et cetera for services that I think 98 Highway desperately needs. So if you can go to the next slide, please. So coming back to Highway 98.
Mr. Anderson, excuse me a minute. How much longer do you have for your own presentation?
I think, uh, one minute, and I'm done, sir.
Okay, that'd be great. Thanks.
So coming back to Highway 98 at Baptist Road, there is a food line there at Sharon. I think there's quite a bit of growth that needs to happen. I think, I think this Falls Village project will give it that stability and that anchor that this corridor needs. It'll be a great addition to this eastern gateway into Durham. We're putting a lot of money into the golf course, quite a bit of improvements. Again, like Robert said, quite a bit of improvements to the clubhouse, and it's actually going to remain a public golf course, and we're partnering with them to do something special. If you can go to the last slide. One of the last things that we did here, guys, just really quickly. So the community will have some private amenities. They'll have a larger, you know, all the amenities that these active adult communities have, but we're enhancing the clubhouse. We're adding two community gardens. One, one that we really feel confident should be more of a public, um, provided garden that we're actually working with some private individuals who live on Baptist Road who want to manage that garden. We're trying to work through that now. So we've got the dog parks, the community gardens. We've actually reached out to Neil Middle School as well, which is a magnet school, and we're hoping to partner with them in some capacity that we think this community would, would work well with. Some of the last things before Mayor, I have to go. We've decided to make a contribution to the Affordable Housing Fund. And, um, you know, and that at $100,000. We're supporting the Freedom Boat Club at the Rolling View Marina. Again, we've, we've provided access to sewer and water, et cetera, to a community out here that really needs it. There's a lot of felling systems, and I think what we're doing is, is pretty significant upgrade for, um, for the surroundings, so we appreciate your time and hope to have your support.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Madam Clerk, I think it would be, yeah, thanks. I was going to suggest you take down the presentation. Thank you so much. We have, I believe, two other people to speak on this item. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Green, and who is the second one?
It's a telephone caller.
Okay. We'll, we'll start with Ms. Green. Ms. Green, can you make yourself heard? Welcome. Are we able to hear Ms. Green? Hello? Ms. Green, this, uh, welcome. We're glad to have you, and you have two minutes. Can you do it in two minutes?
Okay. Thank you for your time. I appreciate the opportunity to talk with you. I'm a small business owner in the Briar Creek area and was very involved in the active adult community, the launch of the Del Webb Carolina Arbor's Neighborhood and other active adult communities in that general area. And I just wanted to share with you some of the things that we have seen that may go unnoticed because they're not obvious when driving through these, and how much, I'm just so impressed with what the residents of the Carolina Arbor's have given back to the Durham community through their volunteer work. We have a, a large group of very talented, skilled people easing their way into retirement and have a lot of energy to give back. Among some of these things is a recent $17,000 donation to the Inner Food Food Shuttle. They donate consistently to the RSVP Retired Senior Volunteer Program, the Durham Tech Food Pantry, community awareness through school supplies, COVID masks, time-sensitive charity work. They've been very involved in the schools, Spring Valley School, and has donated $4,000 to the library recently, and at one point this year had 40 volunteers in that school consistently. They have built a Habitat for Humanity home and are funding a second one. Very active, active veterans club involved with the VA Hospital, and also consistently give to the, the, uh, various programs within Durham associated with the police force, about $15,000 to $17,000 a year for various programs that they support. So I just don't think that that type of thing is often highlighted or perhaps even known when looking at these communities. You see the amenities. Those are very iconic and visual, but I'd like to just highlight the, the good that these residents have brought to the area, and I'm very proud of them, and I'd like to see more of it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Green. I appreciate that. Thank you for bringing that up. Uh, and now I believe we have Mr. Rogers.
Yes. Yes, uh, my name is Sam Rogers, and, uh, I would just like to say that my grandfather was the owner of, uh, this land over 100 years out there, right at the, where this project is going on, and I'm well in support of it, and I appreciate, uh, being on the conference call this afternoon.
Thank you very much for your words of Mr. Rogers. We appreciate hearing from you. Madam Clerk, is there anyone else that would like to be heard on this item?
Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you. All right. Councilmembers, any questions or comments for applicant or the staff? Anyone like to raise their hand for any comments for applicant or questions for applicant or the staff? Okay, I have a, I have a question for... the staff. The Associated Development Plan I've written for the memo commits to a maximum of one hundred and seventy apartment residential units and permanent accessory uses. No commercial developments included with the development plan. The applicant also proposes to change the future land use map designation, one parcel in the site area from medium density residential to commercial. We 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 have some comments from at least one or two planning commission members concerned about the use of the commercial designation. And then and then without any commercial development, but rather using it exclusively for the residential development.
Eric? I think you're on the wrong agenda item.
I'm on the wrong one. Thank you. I'm on the next one. I apologize. Let me go back to this one. You can, of course, answer that question now. No, just kidding. But thank you, council member. Let's see. Hang on. Let me get my computer up. I know my question on one of my questions on this one while coming up revolved around the the extension of the sewer into the the rural tier and the the watershed overlay. It's my understanding from looking at the map that that is that that the applicant is not planning to do that in terms of their site plan. I'm wondering from staff what kind of assurances that we have on that and how do how do we get those assurances?
Thank you. Thank you for the question. And if I could also just clarify one item that was brought up in the applicant's presentation regarding a contribution to affordable housing, that can't be applied at this time through, as this is just an annexation petition. So also to answer your question, as it is just an annexation petition at this time, if the site plan were to fall through or for a future rezoning to to not be approved, the site would still be annexed. And so I don't believe we would have that assurance.
So they would need to come to, are they going, when they are there, they're going to come to us again for so that the the current construction is on the already annexed site?
So the, let's see, we've got a site plan under review right now for the subject site. They need the annexation in order to get the utilities required to develop that site plan. The site plan remains outside of the rural tier. They intend to move their rezoning forward in order to increase the density in those locations that Robert highlighted in his presentation. And that would be through the rezoning. So without the rezoning, they could still do the, I think it was three hundred and forty-one referenced in the the site plan.
What assurances can we get, Mr. Rogers? Short of them coming to us for a rezoning where we do have some we can get those assurances about the not extending the sewer into the rural tier and the water protection overlay. Is there any assurance we can get?
I believe a use permit is required to extend that. And I can pull up the staff report to better speak on that.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Young?
This is Pat Young with the Planning Department. We would, there are both through the utility extension agreement that would be required this developer subsequent to the site plan approval. And in the UDO, there are prohibitions on them extending the utilities into the rural tier. So that that's a, there are at least two means already in place that would preclude them from that. I think what we've said is, you know, some of the amenities associated with this development could be in the rural tier, but none of the development and none of the utilities.
Okay, thank you. That's that's what I wanted to understand. Appreciate it. All righty, I believe that is my only question on this item. Are there other questions or comments on this item? All right. If not, I'm going to declare this public hearing closed. And the matter is before the council. We are as if approval of this would let me get my in from my memo up here. iPad's a little slow. Hang in there. It'll be, it'll it'll happen in a minute. There we go. The, we would need three motions if we were to approve this item. The first would be to adopt an ordinance annexing Falls Village North. The second, we do adopt a consistency statement. The third would be to adopt the ordinance amending the UDO. And I will accept the motion on this item. Anyone would like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance annexing Falls Village North?
Mayor, would this be an appropriate time to make some comments about the proposal?
Absolutely. I apologize. Go for it.
That's okay. You you gave us an opportunity before the public hearing was closed, when not after. And that's generally when I do that.
Please feel free.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that opportunity. Want to thank staff for putting together the agenda item and answering questions. Also want to thank the developer for putting together what is, quite frankly, looks like a beautiful community plan. The the amenities would be fantastic. The housing looks first rate. It's obviously in a growing part of our community and near some commercial areas. So I appreciate the thought and the thoughtfulness that go into it. I'm going to be voting against this annexation petition today, and I want to explain briefly why. This is not the first one of these that we've seen come before the city council in the last year or so. Large tract of land in the county being requested to be annexed into the city for, I think, what we would all consider to be a pretty big residential development. This one is very close to Falls River. And I think that's one of the sensitivities I have about this project. But more than just where it's located and as and as close it is as it is to the floodplain is that yet again, the council is being asked to drop a bunch of houses and the cars that come along with them along roads we don't control, can't maintain or upgrade. And the only way people can get to or from these homes is by having a car. That is not a sustainable development. And I understand that the developers here, again, who've done a fantastic job. This looks like a great place to live. If I were, you know, old enough to live there. But the simple fact is, and 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 our city is growing. We need more housing. Our aging population is growing, especially quickly. We need more places for them to live as well. Understood. Those are givens. But with those givens, we have choices on the city council about what we are willing to allow and what we're not. And to the extent that we keep allowing these kinds of large, single-family home developments to be built where in places where we don't control the roads, we can't upgrade them. And where there is no access to public transit, this is what we're going to continue to get. And and irrespective of the beauty of this particular development, the thoughtfulness that's gone into its creation, the support. And again, I want to thank the folks who called in to support it because their input is important as well. I think, you know, we have these are the choices that we get to make. And the fact that the developer did a good job in putting together a project that looks like a lovely place to live and the fact that they've jumped through all the hoops to get to this point doesn't mean that we ought to reward them with the annexation. It means that they get in the door to have the conversation with us. And I also want to thank the developer for being willing to spend time with me personally twice to have conversation about their their, what they're trying to do with this project. And think that they deserve all the credit in the world. But the problems that I have with this annexation are things the developer can't really do anything about. The other piece about this is that I have always been very reluctant to create or expand satellite annexations. They pose a unique set of challenges for city infrastructure, especially our public safety officers, whether it be fire or police. And and so those are also considerations for me. Again, want to thank everybody involved, but I'll be voting against the annexation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, council member. Any other council members like to make comments on this item? Seeing none, then we will move to take up the item. Is there a motion to adopt an ordinance annexing Falls Village North?
It's moved.
Is there a second? Is there a second to this item? All right.
Intent of voting against.
Okay, there's a second with an intent to vote against. So it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just real quick, I also plan on voting against. I think that I I this reminds me very much of the development on Olive Branch that we took up that I think came through two different times. And I actually voted against the first round and then voted for the second round, partly because of some of the commitments that the developer made. In hindsight, I actually regret that vote, that vote flip. Partly because I I want to commend my colleague for a lot of my reticence with this. I drive out that way pretty frequently. And the traffic and what we're doing in that direction of the county is is really alarming. I don't see, it's exactly the kind of development we all say we don't want. We say we don't want. We know we can't do it. We know it's not sustainable. Additionally, I will say that because we have put infrastructure out there as a city ourselves with the pump station, we are also driving a lot of the development. We put the pump station out there. We know we needed it. But we have, to me, that was kind of like a an alarm for developers to say, okay, well, now we can tie into city infrastructure. And when we put that pump station out there, we didn't do it cohesively with the transportation plan and with the other things that we need out there. And that's our fault. And so the only way that we're going to get the development we want is if we get our staff to, when we put infrastructure, we have to look at holistically. We have to think about transportation. We have to do it in a sustainable way. And so I regret the decision I made on the Olive Branch vote. And I will not be voting, I will not be making that mistake again today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments? Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to comment that I came into this hearing not really knowing which way I was going to go on this, but I find myself swayed by Councilmember Reese's argument against the development. It also, though, is pointing out to me just a a general, you know, problem with how we like how how we do development, right? Like, I feel like we and how and how we make these decisions. I feel like this this kind of piecemeal approach and we don't really I feel a lack of a holistic strategy around these kinds of broader sustainability questions around where we want different housing types to go, what kind of housing we want where. Like, I don't actually know if it's a good idea to put more density in this area in the watershed, right? So what what should go there? I'm sure these are all questions that we're going to be taking up as we redo our comprehensive plan. But it just, yeah, it's bringing up for me all kinds of conflicts that I don't know. I don't think that we're giving developers a good template. And we're not really describing well what we want to see. So that's just some things that are on my mind. But I'm going to be voting against this annexation. Thank you.
I'm going to make some comments. I'm going to be voting for this. I think that this developer has done a lot of things that we want. They provided, they're they're planning to provide lots of density, more density than we usually get. The regards, at at the same time, they're providing a lot of, they're they're protecting a lot of green space. And I think that is unusual. And and I also think that there are a lot of things about the developer that are the kinds of things that we hear all the time from our advocates that they want in a developer. Also, they in terms of this, the kind of community that this is, I think that they make a great point about the fact that the traffic that'll be generated is less than most other residential communities by a significant amount. No question that ninety-eight is a bad situation. But that's not the developer's fault. There's a lot of work being done now by our transportation folks to think about what ninety-eight will be. And how to how to make it better, how to improve it. And that's going to take a lot of work. But I think that in terms of the satellite issue, I understand that, but it is contiguous to another part of another satellite. And so I don't think it creates there any particular problems. So as I say, I'll be voting for this development. Councilmember Middleton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Every once in a while, I have these moments that remind me of how proud I am to be part of this council and part of this discussion society. And I appreciate Councilor Reese's statements and and the Mayor Pro Tim statements. Interestingly enough, I will be supporting this development precisely because of what Mayor Pro Tim said. We don't have a comprehensive strategy yet. And because we don't, I don't want to appear capricious by picking a developer here or there where I'm going to assert what I think that comprehensive strategy should be. The fact that I cannot say today that I'm going to vote consistently the same way for every single developer who comes to us from here or now based upon my concerns about satellite developments, my concern. Listen, we've got some work to do on our transportation overall. And and we need to be doing that. We need to be turning our transportation into one that's accessible and useful to all people. That's on us, not developers. And the pump station is out there. We we put infrastructure out there anticipating a growth, or at least it signals that we were anticipating it. So the absence of that strategy that Mayor Pro Tim alludes to makes me a little uncomfortable with with appearing, again, capricious, picking and choosing which developer on on a particular day I'm going to vote for or against, against a yardstick that we have not codified as of yet. I do also want to associate myself with the things you said, Mr. Mayor, that this developer has done indeed with respect to this project. So for those reasons, with 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 a clear commitment to developing that strategy and coming to some sense of a cohesive, a unified vision moving forward, we need to do that. But in the absence, I'm not, I'm not going to make this developer the poster child for for the absence of it today. So I'll be voting for the development. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, council member. All right, we have a motion on the floor. Councilmember Freeman?
Thank you. I I anticipated not this situation. But I really appreciate all the comments that have been made. And I just wanted to share that in this case, like many cases, I usually have this differential opinion about satellite sites. And I I really appreciate the context of how Councilmember Reese laid out exactly what the problem was, was urban sprawl. And recognizing that urban sprawl has been an issue since I was on the planning commission. And I've voted against most cases like this. I I'm always compelled to vote against it more than 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 for. This case is not about the development. This case is about an annexation. And the annexation is down ninety-eight. And I want to make sure that it's clear that this is more so about who lives down ninety-eight right now and who will not be there if we continue to do this urban sprawl model without the transportation or the planning to make sure that the roads meet the the necessary requirements because you know what traffic is like there. And if we don't have the plans in place and we're not addressing it yet, all we're doing is putting those folks at at risk. The pedestrian ability to get down the the road, the consistent issues around for folks with, folks who in our community don't have access to a car, those are all weighing in on this. And so as I weigh that against the fact that I still cannot see measurably how much it will cost the city to annex this piece of property, I cannot support an annexation. I cannot support an annexation. This is not about the development. This is about an annexation. And I can't support an annexation not knowing what it's going to cost the city as a whole to move forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmembers. Do we have any other comments? All right, we have a motion on the floor, and that motion is to hang on, my computer's waiting for me again. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance annexing Falls Village North. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Shul?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Nay.
Councilmember Caballero?
Nay.
Councilmember Freeman?
Nay.
Councilmember Middleton?
I vote yea.
Councilmember Reese?
No.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The motion fails to a for nay. And we will now move on to item 24. I don't believe we need to take up any of the rest of those motions, do we, Mr. Young?
No, no, you don't, Mr. Mayor, and given the fact that the annexation failed.
Thank you. Well, now we'll go on to item 24, the one I wanted to be on earlier, consolidated annexation for Fox Crossing, and now we'll hear from staff.
Hello again, Emily Struthers with the planning department, and this is where the Fox Crossing item request for utility extension agreement and voluntary annexation have been received from Kenneth Burnham of Foxwood Crossing Apartments LLC and Tim Seivers of Horvath Associates for five parcels generally located at 928 South Miami Boulevard. The annexation petition is for a contiguous expansion of the corporate city limits. In addition, the applicant proposes to change the zoning designation of the site, which also includes areas currently within city limits from commercial center with a development plan, residential suburban 20 and residential urban 5, to commercial general with a development plan committing to a maximum of 170 apartment residential units and no commercial development. There is no change proposed for the existing Falls Jordan watershed protection overlay District B. The applicant also proposes to change the future land use map designation of one parcel within the site from medium density residential to commercial. The remaining site is currently designated as commercial on the future land use map, which is consistent with the rezoning request. If approved, the annexation petition and associated applications would become effective on June 30th, 2020. In addition to the commitments outlined in the staff report and identified on the development plan, the applicant proposes to add or revise the following commitments that have been vetted by staff. The first, a minimum of 10% tree preservation area shall be provided. And the second, a revised fence height from six feet to eight feet where identified adjacent to the Waiters parcel on the development plan. City and county operational departments such as solid waste, fire, police, and EMS have reviewed this request. The police department identified potential service delivery impacts, but otherwise no impacts were identified. The public works and water management departments have determined that the existing City of Durham water and C R D sewer have capacity for the proposed development. The budget and management services department determined that the proposed annexation will become revenue positive immediately following annexation. Additional information can be found in the staff report. The Durham Planning Commission at their December 10, 2019 meeting recommended approval of the proposed zoning and future land use map amendment by vote of nine to three. Staff determines that these requests are consistent with the comprehensive plan and applicable policies and ordinances. Four motions are required for this application. The first is to adopt an ordinance annexing the property and entering into a utility extension agreement. The second is to adopt a resolution amending the future land use map. The third is to adopt a consistency statement, and the fourth is for the zoning ordinance. Thank you, and staff is available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Struthers. You've now heard the report from staff, and I'm going to declare this public hearing open. And first, I ask if there are other, if there are questions by members of the council for staff, and I'll start with mine, Ms. Struthers, which is the, we have this commercial development where we're putting, where the applicant is, wants to put rather 170 residential units, and as I understand it, no commercial. And we had some, a couple of planning commissioners that commented on this with concern. Could you speak to that?
Certainly, and thank you for the heads up on last item, that you'd be asking that. So yes, the U D O allows for apartment
Funny, Ms. Struthers.
Allows for apartment residential on commercial zones and commercial plumbed land, so it's consistent with the U D O, though it is certainly confusing.
Thank you. And 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 it's not only consistent with the U D O, but we, we, it happens. This is not the first time we've seen this. It happens with a reasonable degree of frequency, you would say.
Yes, we have seen apartment uses come on commercial. I believe there was one early last year. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, any questions for Ms. Struthers at this time? Thank you. I'm now going to ask the clerk to let us know who is speaking on this item.
Mayor Shul, we have four speakers.
Could you give us our name, their names?
I can. The first is Charles Hassinger. We have after that Joshua Reinkie, Kenyon Burnham, and Timothy Seivers. I believe Timothy will be going first.
Thank you. Why don't you unmute Mr. Seivers, and I'll discuss this with him?
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor. How are you today, sir?
Mr. Seivers, welcome. There are four speakers to this item. You, are you planning to make a presentation?
Yes, sir. I need approximately six to seven minutes for my presentation. Charles Hassinger is the other consultant here with us today. Josh Reinkie is our traffic consultant, but that'll also be available for questions.
All right, and then there's a fourth person. Are you aware of them, or Madam Clerk, can you tell me about the fourth person who wants to speak?
His name is Kenyon Burnham.
All right. Do we know if Mr. Burnham is a proponent or an opponent?
He is a proponent.
He's a proponent?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Seivers, that sounds fine. Why don't you go ahead, and after the speakers, we will, we'll give you six or seven minutes. We'll give each of the other speakers two minutes if they would like it. And then if there are other speakers to the item, we'll get them in, okay?
Okay, thank you, sir. Again, Tim Seivers with Horvath Associates, 16 Consultant Place, Durham, North Carolina. Emily, thank you for your hard work on this project and all the staff members that have devoted time to this project. The request in front of you this this afternoon is a rezoning to commercial general with the development plan, a future land use map amendment, as well as an annexation. The project area is approximately just over 12 acres. The majority of this site was currently zoned as a commercial center based on the development plan back in 1996. That allotted for 96,500 square feet of commercial development. It included access points on the Lynn Road, Pleasant Drive, and US 70. And that development plan from 1996 did not accommodate for stream buffers as our plan currently does today. The project's located along US 70, what is now known as the East End Connector. The, this widening project previously taken land from the project area and will also eliminate the access onto US 70 that's shown on the previous development plan. In addition to the stream buffers and utility easements have eliminated the potential for a commercial center on this property. Furthermore, N C D O T project is proposing to convert US 70 from Lynn Road to T W Alexander as a controlled access freeway. Even though N C D O T has currently had this project on hold, there are two development options. The northern option has no impact on the project area. The southern object, southern option, does have an impact on the project area, but we've discussed this with N C D O T, and they've allowed allowed this project to move forward and have fully reviewed this project. It is also our team's opinion that the northern route will be chosen and which will not impact the development while keeping access to the project area. The proposed development include, proposed development plan includes rezoning this project area to CG to allow for the development of up to 170 residential units, residential apartment units. Commercial designation was chosen for this site since the majority of the site was already zoned commercial. And prior to our submittal in October of two, October of 2018, this, this was reviewed with, that decision was reviewed with staff. The apartments will vary in size with a mix of one, two, and three bedroom apartment options. The average will be in excess of about 1,000 square feet. Rent forecast obviously will depend on the final market analysis, but likely around a dollar, around $1.25 a square foot. That equates to 1,000 square foot apartment renting for approximately $1,250 per month. The site's location and proposed apartment development provided, excuse me, provide a great transition and is more compatible between the highly used freeway of US 70 directly to the east and the adjacent single family residential homes to the west and southwest. In addition, the earlier mentioned stream buffers and power line easements make the site ideal for apartment development. The development plan illustrates commitments to right-of-way dedication, landscape buffers, tree preservation area, maximum purview area of 70%, a maximum of 170 units, as well as access points to Lynn and Pleasant Drive. Road improvements will be constructed on Pleasant Drive and provide a left turn lane into the development and construct a three-lane section towards US 70, as well as providing a bike lane. The developer also construct a bus stop along Lynn Road and/or Pleasant Drive adjacent to the site if required by Go Durham. We've committed to an $18,000 contribution to the Durham Public Schools and a $17,000 contribution to the City of Durham Dedicated Housing Fund. Emily had previously mentioned the additional tax commitments that have been reviewed by staff. We are going to commit to a minimum of 10% tree preservation area. 3% is required with the commercial zone. If this was to be rezoned to a residential zone, it would be required to have 7% tree coverage. So we want to go above and beyond those requirements and provide that minimum of 10%. And as, also as Ms. Struthers mentioned, that we'll be providing or increasing the height of the fence along the adjacent property owners for Miss Waiters to eight feet. As the applicant, I'm providing my verbal consent to the following condition and committed element. Increase the height of the fence to eight feet, currently shown as six feet on the southwest property line as shown on sheet D 100 of the development plan. In accordance with this verbal consent, I'm agreeing to sign the consent language that will be placed on the approved development plan, and that signature will be effective as of the date of this meeting. The second application in front of you tonight is for the land use map application, which covers approximately 0.71 acres. The portion of the development will not contain apartment units and will not have, excuse me, will not contain apartment units and will have a maximum building height of 20 feet as shown in the development plan and as was requested by the neighbors. A neighborhood meeting was held prior to submittal in September of 2018. Notices were mailed to the property owners informing them of the commercial rezoning. That notice also informed them that even though it wasn't a commercial rezoning, it was a proposed residential apartment complex. Two primary concerns were raised at that meeting. One, the neighbors felt strongly towards the donation for the affordable housing. The second item was the increase in traffic. In comparison to what exists today, the development will increase the traffic, and I've discussed those appropriate improvements for the road construction. However, when compared to the commercial center that could be constructed without input of neighbors, planning commission, or the city council, traffic will be reduced. To certify this, Josh Reinkie with Raimy Kemp and Associates, associates did complete a traffic comparison. We compared a reasonable, in other words, what could be developed truly on the site today, 50,000 square foot retail center versus the 170 unit apartment complex. They found that the apartment complex would generate 2,900 fewer daily trips during a typical 24-hour work period. Josh is signed in and available for questions on that item if needed. Planning commission approved this project with a vote of nine to three. The commissioners who did vote against this project had some academic concerns as well as concerns with views of the adjacent parcels. I would like to note that the adjacent parcels do sit above this site in elevation, anywhere from 10 to 30 feet in height. And with the existing vegetation on the adjacent parcels, in addition to our project boundary buffers, the adjacent homes will be well screened from our development. As also, the developers committed to additional tree save above the requirements for both a commercial and residential zoning. Landscape buffers are either equal to or above the opacity that would be required if it was a residential zone. Also, after the planning commission, we provided a then six-foot, now eight-foot tall screen fence adjacent to Miss Waiters as she requested during the planning commission hearing. In closing, I ask that you vote in favor of this rezoning to allow proposed development of 170 apartment units on the site that's no longer achievable as a commercial retail center as it's currently zoned. It'll provide a great transition between the surrounding neighbors to US 70 and allow an underutilized portion of Durham to be developed as a gateway into our city. If there's any questions, I'm available. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seivers. Mr., are there other speakers to this item that would like to be heard at this time? I know there were three more people that signed up.
This is Tim Seivers again. Charles Hassinger and Kenyon are here with me today, and they've both said they're available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, and there's one more speaker as well. Madam Clerk, could you identify that speaker and make them available to speak?
His name's Joshua Reinkie, and I'm unmuting him.
Thank you. Mr. Reinkie, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. This is Joshua Reinkie. Tim did a very thorough job and stole a lot of my thunder. I was the transportation engineer that was hired to do a trip generation comparison. Worked with Raimy Kemp and Associates, 5808 Farringdon Place, Raleigh, North Carolina. We did look at the previously approved development plan, the a very conservative way of looking at that as saying that only 50,000 square feet of retail could be developed, and then compared that to 170 apartments. So while Tim indicated it was 2,900 less daily trips, it's also 119 less AM peak hour trips and 141 less PM peak hour trips for, compared to what is previously approved for that land. It's also under the threshold to warrant a traffic impact analysis, full traffic impact analysis by N C D O T or the city guidelines. And just one of the things that Tim also kind of checked off as he approached us, they were looking to put in a left turn lane. That always kind of calms my, any concerns I have for safety issues at a site driveway when they put in the left turn lane. So they are taking care of that even without having to do a traffic impact analysis. And I'm available for any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Reinkie. Colleagues, do you have any questions for staff or applicant at this time? Councilmember Freeman?
I just had a question for the applicant. So I recognize that this, well, maybe for staff. I'm trying to understand if this would qualify for the affordable housing density bonus that we discussed in the previous meeting? And and how that would apply in this case. Like, I just want to know what the difference would be if they were using the affordable housing density bonus versus, what was it, 17,000 for the Affordable Housing Fund? Anyone?
Sorry, yes, thank you for your question. I'm trying to pull up the ordinance now to be able to answer that. I just need to confirm whether or not the affordable housing bonus would be permissible under the commercial zoning. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, that was.
Let's see, and Pat may be able to chime in if he knows more directly than I do.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't think about that when I was looking at this because I didn't know that they were prop or they were making the, the additional, you know, offer of 17,000 to the fund. But I
Yeah, I'm sorry, Councilmember Freeman, the affordable housing density bonus can be utilized in, in the commercial districts.
It can be, you said?
It can be. It just needs to be for the residential use, but it can be in a commercial district, yes.
And and for the applicant, is there a reason you're not using the affordable housing density bonus?
No, ma'am, there's not.
Am I missing? I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
I'm just trying to, trying to, maybe I'm not stating the question as clearly as I possibly can. But I would like to know what this project would look like if the affordable housing density bonus was included rather than this $17,000. And I guess how much of a difference that would make on the applicant's side of the conversation.
I think that's a question for our staff, and maybe Mr. Young, you can help us there.
Sure. Good evening again, Councilmembers, Pat Yon with the planning department. Yeah, so the affordable housing density bonus would, would require that 15% of the units be affordable. So
So I'd have to do some math on what that means for the, for the proposal that's before you now. And that they would get a equal number of market rate units. So I think the issue, and this is where I would have to defer to the applicant, is that that the cost of providing the units for most developments significantly exceeds the value of the density bonus without some other form of subsidy, so. But in terms of what it would look like, it would be, I'll try to do that math and get back to you all as soon as possible here. But I think it's 15% minimum number of units.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you. Other questions or comments, colleagues? Councilmember Middleton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, colleagues. I'm going to support the development. I did want to say to Mr. Cyvers, I think this is the first time I've ever heard comments by our planning commission characterized as academic in nature. I assure you, their, their intent is to have a very real-world, practical impact on a decision when they, when they recommend to vote yea or nay. So I, I just, what did I just found out? It's interesting kind of characterization. But I did, I want to say that we take very seriously all of the comments from our planning commission. They're very helpful in informing our decisions. I don't know what that's worth to you moving forward as you appear before other bodies, but, but I, I don't know what academic means, but, but they're definitely trying to sway the debate in a very real world and measurable way. So I intend on supporting the development. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Those are sound comments, Councilmember Middleton. Tim, you're going to be seeing a lot of them. You might want to think about how you characterize them. Colleagues, any more comments, questions for the applicant or, or the mayor pro tem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand that the commercial zoning is allowable under the UDO. I would just like to get some insight from the applicant as to why they chose a commercial zoning rather than one of the residential options.
Sure, this is Tim Cyvers, Horvath Associates. Thank you for all, all your comments. For the, one of the main reasons is that this was previously a commercial zone. In discussions with staff prior to our submittal, they wanted to keep the commercial node even though the understanding that this was a residential apartment development. So that brought into it, but it was mostly just because the majority of the site was previously a commercial development.
But you're not planning on doing any commercial on it now, right? So I, I mean, I guess that's a question for staff then is what's the, what good is a commercial node with no, what good is his own commercial node with no commercial? Why would we want an applicant to keep it?
Hi, thank you. I can chime in a little bit regarding the future land use map. If the, with the change to the future land, a change to the future land use map would be an extra step, but it would also change the future land use map. So if this were to come back as another rezoning, we would then be looking at it as residential as opposed to that commercial node that had previously been established through the comprehensive plan and the future land use map in that location.
Pat, did you want to weigh in on that?
Just, just to, just to state that when, with the, this policy, that policy was being formed back in 2004 and '05, the conversation centered around the idea that allowing apartments in the commercial districts would encourage mixed use so that you could have co-located service commercial, you know, small grocery stores, convenience stores, dry cleaning, coffee shops, et cetera, if it was a larger development. It, it's a, it's fair to say that in every situation that doesn't occur, but it, it was allowed to encourage that.
Okay, thanks. There, is there any, what advan, is there an advantage to the developer of asking for commercial over residential in this case?
So that some, some of the required, and I, I'd have to, I don't have this at hand, but some of the required setbacks and height limitations and those kind of things are, are different than some of the residential zones. I, I, the applicant may be able to speak to what, and then there are some limitations in the development plan in that regard. But generally, depending on the district, there, there's can be somewhat more permissive in those areas.
Okay, thanks, that's helpful. Can we, I mean, I don't, I think I need to think a little bit more about how big a deal this is. Like, I, it feels strange to zone something commercial and then not have any commercial, but maybe it's something we can flag for follow-up with the, in the comp plan conversations.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you, and agreed, I, I agree that this is, you know, a lot of times this is useful in the way that Pat described, but I hear you. All righty, before Councilmember Caballero is forced to depart, I think we'll go ahead and take a vote on this item. You all have heard.
Mayor, I promise not to, Mr. Mayor, I promise not to take too long.
There is a speaker that's raised her hand.
Okay, we have a speaker that's raised their hand and then we'll go to Councilmember Reese.
My name is Wendy Dixon.
All right, Ms. Dixon, welcome, and can you make yourself heard?
Yes, hi, I'm Wendy Dixon and I actually received a letter about this. I own the house. I'm assuming it is across the highway on Pleasant Drive at 415. So what would this mean for me as a, as a homeowner that it's being rezoned commercial?
Is Ms. Dixon within the rezoning area of Mr. others?
My understanding is that she is not.
Okay, Mr. Cyvers, can you speak to that?
Yes, this is Tim Cyvers, Horvath Associates. I believe, Ms. Dixon, I believe she may have said that she was on the opposite side of US-70. Is that correct?
Yes, Tim, I think I've actually spoken to you on the phone before.
I, I believe so as well, yes. So, so this, this is not going to impact your property. This is on the other side of, of US-70 or, or Miami Boulevard. And it'll, it'll impact, so it will have no impact on your individual property.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon.
Just, just because it feels a little unnerving when someone says that a development coming online in a neighborhood near 70, even across the street would have no impact, I just want to be clear that it can have impact to her tax value as this development occurring in that area. Just being clear that this, it's not new impact. And that, that impact is not determined by the development, it's just something to be, be aware of as a property owner.
Thank you. Councilmember Reese?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I promise to be brief. I'll be voting against the measure today. This use is completely incompatible with surrounding homes. It's a five-story apartment building, for goodness sake. And I just, I certainly appreciate the desire for additional density and appreciate the developers' work to reach out to their neighbors. But the compatibility is one thing and the other thing is just the lack of the, the fact that we're talking about putting all these units right up against Highway 70. Planning Commissioner Baker submitted what may have been some academic references, but certainly have real-world impacts for the folks that live near busy roadways. And those citations were about the health effects of that, so I won't be supporting the measure today. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'll be brief with my comments as well. I will be supporting it. I think that this is actually a very good place for these residences and I agree that they're tall, but I think the topography is very helpful in that regard. And I, while I understand the concerns about air pollution near residences, it's just something we're all facing all the time. This is a city, and so I found that unpersuasive. Okay, any other comments? I'm going to now declare this public hearing closed. Closed and the matter is back before the council, but I see Mr. Young may have a comment. No. He just showed up there for a moment. Mr. Young, do you have a comment?
Do. I'm sorry, I was having technical difficulties. I wanted to quickly address Councilmember Freeman's question for your vote. With the use of the Affordable Housing Density Bonus, 25 of the 170 units would have to be affordable at 15%. That would get you a two-for-one bonus, so you get 50 additional market units for a total of 220. Thank you.
And I think that what we can safely say is that we'll be getting people using the Affordable Density Bonus in places where there is a higher value for each apartment and that the developer is able to realize a more, more profit from that additional density. All right, I'm now going to, let me go back to this item. The first motion necessarily to adopt an ordinance annexing false crossing into the city of Durham.
So moved.
Been moved by Madam Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Councilmember Middleton. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Shul?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Caballero?
Aye.
Councilmember Freeman?
Nay.
Councilmember Middleton?
I vote yea.
Councilmember Reese?
No.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I believe the score was, the ayes have it four to two.
That is correct.
And now we'll move to the second motion to adopt a resolution amending the future land use map to commercial for the site.
What was the, what was, yeah, what was Deidre Austin's thing about, oh, well, you know, there's people that live there now that will. You know who lives there now and who won't, or something.
Mr. Shock, you might want to mute yourself.
A host can mute him as well. We have several staff as hosts.
I would love to hear what they're laughing about with my comments.
We have a second. We have another motion to adopt a resolution amending the future land use map to commercial.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Middleton, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Shul?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Caballero?
Aye.
Councilmember Freeman?
Nay.
Councilmember Middleton?
Middleton, yea.
Councilmember Reese?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe again that the ayes have it four to two. It will now move to motion number three to adopt a consistency statement as required by NCGS 160A 383.
Move to adopt consistency.
Second.
Been moved by Councilmember Middleton, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Did we adopt the consistency statement? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Shul?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Caballero?
Aye.
Councilmember Freeman?
Nay.
Councilmember Middleton?
I vote aye.
Councilmember Reese?
Vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That motion passes five to one. Now we'll have a fourth motion to adopt an ordinance amending the United Unified Development Ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Middleton, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mayor Shul?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Caballero?
Aye.
Councilmember Freeman?
Nay.
Councilmember Middleton?
I vote aye.
Councilmember Reese?
Vote no.
Thank you.
Thank you. The motion passes four to two. Thank you so much. All right, I know Councilmember Caballero has to leave. Councilmember, I'm, I think without an excused absence, she'll be voting yes on the next item. Do you have a high comfort level with that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Have a great time at the.
Thank you all. Good night.
That sounds like a lot of fun.
Congratulations to Paolo.
Absolutely.
Tell him congratulations from all of us.
All right, we have one more item before the closed session. The Unified Development Ordinance text amendment, Neighborhood Protection Overlay revisions. And this is a public hearing item. We'll now hear from staff.
I suppose it's evening now, Mr. Mayor and members of council. This is Scott Whitman from the Plan Department again. This text amendment includes revisions to the Neighborhood Protection Overlay process, mostly related to the initiation of NPOs. The intent of these changes clarify the process for requesting NPOs and codify the existing guidelines. Another key component is to require initiation by the appropriate governing body to determine the level of support and commitment to necessary resources before work on the NPO begins. Though I promise we will sort out the resolution issue before we bring one of those to you again. Staff recommends approval of this UDO amendment, as does the Planning Commission. As a reminder, this item requires two motions, one for a consistency statement and one for the adoption of the ordinance, and I'd be happy to answer any questions from the council.
Thank you very much, Mr. Whitman. You all have heard the report from staff and I'm declaring this public hearing open. And first, I'm going to ask if there are any questions for the staff by members of the council. Hearing none. Madam Clerk, are there any, has anyone signed up to speak on this item?
Not to my knowledge, Mr. Mayor.
All right, is there anyone who is listening today who would like to speak on this item? If so, please raise your hand. All right, any comments or questions by members of the council for staff?
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, but Mrs. Plas has raised her hand.
Okay, thank you. We'll hear from Ms. Plas.
Yes, thank you. I apologize for any confusion. Yes, I, I just wanted to follow up on a few things here. My understanding was that this amendment evolved kind of as a postmortem on old West Durham experience with their NPO. And as a result of that, I just had a few questions and, and issues with this. I, I worry that this amendment, which I'm sure is going to pass anyway, but I want to point out that this amendment will encourage the politi, the politicization, I'm saying that wrong, of the NPO process too early on. As we just saw earlier in this session, it forces a vote on an NPO before the actual items of the NPO have even been developed. We just saw that. That seems essentially unfair. If we're going to undo NPOs, perhaps we should just undo NPOs rather than continue to have them as a false offering to Durham's citizenry. As it is, council cannot fairly judge something that has not yet been formed. And, and that is essentially what this text amendment does. The revisions by staff also foster an unbalanced playing field where Durham requires its neighborhood to seek the grace of city council on an embryonic rezoning action when Durham does not require the same from its developers. NPOs are the only citizen-led tool written into our UDO. And staff's proposed changes risk damaging the very scant and lessening neighborhood rights remaining to Durham's citizens. Beyond that, with respect specifically to the Old West Durham situation, there was a great deal of damage done to the social fabric of that neighborhood by the resistance that was mounted against them. We know a little bit about who mounted that resistance and I have sent that information to you. The professional developer class of Durham enjoys many privileges and I think it's very inappropriate for them to organize and beat up on Durham neighborhoods. Thank you. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Plas.
Thank you.
Is there, is there a member of our staff that could comment on the first part of Mrs. Ms. Plas's comment? Mr. Whitman?
Yes, Ms. Plas is correct. We crafted these after the adoption of the Old West Durham NPO based on some lessons learned from that experience. One, based on the resources as our first discussion this evening. The Old West Durham neighborhood did submit a valid application back in 2012. It was 2016 before we had the staff resources to begin that. So we want to set the realistic expectations as to whether or not the, the department has the availability to work on the NPO before at the time that the neighborhood submits it. It's also, I would disagree with Ms. Plas that it was not just the developers in the neighborhood that opposed the Old West Durham NPO. There were a lot of residents who, who lived there who also became opponents of the NPO. who, who lived there, who also became opponents of the NPO. It took many, many hours of work based on the, the, team of residents that were leading the NPO. And, um, without having some input from the city council, which is, as you well know, are the only people who can approve or deny a zoning action. There was really, they had no idea whether or not the city council would be receptive to any of the ideas that, um, were being brought forward. I will say that this is similar to the process that we've created for local historic districts, which is probably the most similar, um, type of, um, application that the department has. I hope that, uh, addresses what, uh, Ms. Plus was asking.
Thank you, Mr. Whitman. All right. Uh, are there any, uh, questions or comments for staff at this time? Mr. Young, do you want to make a comment as well?
I do. If I might quickly, Mr. Mayor, um, as a point of information, of course, I would, as ever, I would defer to the city attorney, but, um, the, uh, there's some special legislation that pertains to virtual public hearings for these zoning items. And in the case of an absence, it, it differs from the traditional situation where absence after, uh, unexcused absence is a, uh, yes. Uh, absence essentially is counted as no vote. So I just, um, the attorney can verify that, but I wanted to get that on the record before you all take action.
Thank you for letting me know that. I'd, I'd forgotten that. I believe that's correct, Ms. Ray Burr.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Brave new world. Madam Clerk, did you have something? Is there someone else would like to speak?
Um, Mr. Mayor, Mrs. Plus has her hand raised again.
All right. Ms. Plus, you, you, uh, you make yourself hurt.
I, I am so sorry. No, I was trying to get in earlier and, uh, sorry, I've got the TV on in the background. I was trying to get in earlier and press, uh, star nine a number of times. And so I apologize. No, I've, I've made my statements. I certainly remain available if anyone has any questions. But, uh, yeah, I, I, I do believe that our professional developer class, as I stated before, the, uh, Planning Commission, uh, the Triangle Community Coalition did in fact organize against the Old West Durham NPO effort. And so, um, there certainly was an organized outside effort at play in that event. And I do think, uh, that in a world where our citizens have fewer and fewer devices available to them, that when they do make the extraordinary effort to try and access those devices, they should not be punished by the developers who already have ever so much influence in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Plus. All right. Uh, any other comments or questions for staff? Councilmember Middleton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, it strikes me that this, this conversation about NPOs keeps coming back to resources. And our ability to commit bandwidth and resources to doing them, which to me, and, and I'm, I'm struck by something the Mayor Pro Tem said earlier, that it's within our purview. It's not guaranteed that you're going to get an affirmative when you apply. The mere act of applying, does not guarantee an affirmative response. However, if, if we keep talking about resources, then to me that does imply that it's a yes when we can afford it. If, if we keep talking about resources and staff bandwidth, the message that I would get is when we can get to it, we'll do it. And I find Ms. Plus's arguments compelling in terms of, of us being placed in a position to appear that we're making a decision on merits when the merits haven't even been presented to us. If, if they never get to a point where we can even look at what's in the NPO, but we're saying no based upon resources, if it truly is about resources, then that is a yes when we can afford it. And maybe our focus needs to be on, uh, do we need to have a pot of money aside or, or, or do we need to do something about putting ourselves in the position to be able to, to manage these, uh, these things when they come up? I think it's important that residents do have, if it's an option for residents to impact, uh, development in our city, then we ought not, it's kind of like voting. We ought not problematize it or, or put barriers to them accessing this, this ability. If we're going to give them this ability, then we should make it as accessible and as robust as possible. And if this argument hinges on resources, then we need to talk about that. I don't want to be in a position where I'm, I'm in a de facto way voting on the merits of, of, of a case that never got a chance to be argued or presented, uh, to me. So I just want to point that out, that if, if this is about resources, then that sounds to me like, yes, we'll do it when we can afford to do it. Um, and I think that creates certain expectations amongst applicants. And, and I, I just want to put that in the record and, and just let you know, that's something that's rattling around, you know, on my craw as, as, as I consider this matter. And I, I'm curious to hear, uh, input from my colleagues. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mr. Young?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and thank you, Councilman Middleton, Middleton for those comments. Let me, let me make clear that I think there are two separate and distinct issues, um, at play from a staff perspective. The staff's primary, um, focus area, of course, is implementing your policy direction, and it, that is a resource issue. I think Mr. Whitman did a very good job of, um, in both of the NPOs we have had and, um, previously adopted. They're, they were very contentious, and it took a lot of communication with neighbors and was, um, between a thousand and, and two thousand hours of staff time. So that resource issue is substantial and real. I do think there's a separate independent issue, which is really a policy issue, and that's for you all, is the, um, you know, the level of influence that neighborhoods should be able to be granted in, um, developing these NPOs if they're approved, uh, and what kind of content is in those NPOs. I've been doing this for, work for twenty-five years, and in my experience, a hundred percent of the time, these NPOs are, are, uh, are promoted by existing, uh, usually longtime homeowners whose primary interest is ensuring that there's very little change in their neighborhood. And as a city, uh, I think it's obviously very critical that we, uh, continue to allow housing opportunities in a diversity of locations so that there's a diversity of housing for different, um, incomes and different family types. That is a policy issue that we're trying to attack through the comprehensive plan, and you'll hear a lot more from us on that. But I just want to frame out that those, I think, are, are separate and distinct. And, but they do play together. So thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, as usual, Pat, your comments are very helpful, and, and, and I think you put it where it belongs on us. I mean, to me, that, that seems to point towards the validity of NPOs themselves. I mean, if we're going to allow this as a, an, uh, an option for residents, then, but we have a philosophical, problem with them, or we understand that, that they tend to be employed by homeowners who want to keep their neighborhood the same. If we know that and we believe that, and we take that to its logical conclusion, then, then why entertain them at all? I mean, if, if we're going to allow this option, uh, to be exercised by residents, and I, I don't want to engage in the theater of, of, of allowing the option, but, but erecting these barriers, uh, de facto or otherwise, uh, to their use. I mean, let, if, 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 if they are being used as an instrument to, um, frustrate our efforts at, uh, housing diversity, then let, let, let's call it that and, and treat the option as such. But if we're going to allow them and make them available to residents, then I think we should do that, uh, in good faith. And I'm not talking about the staff. Now, I'm talking about, uh, uh, as a council. The only thing I want to be, if, if, if I'm being asked to determine whether or not staff, we have the resources or bandwidth to do them, that's a different consideration than, uh, opining about the virtue of the actual presentation itself, because I haven't seen it yet. But if we're already out the gate, um, making, uh, we're biased or prejudiced against these things because they tend to be used by homeowners to keep their neighborhood the same, then we should just say that and, and, and govern ourselves accordingly. So I, I, I want to, I just want to, you know, I'm, again, in fairness, I want to, if we're going to do them, let's do them, and let's make them accessible to our residents. And if we're not, if we have a problem with them, let's say that and govern ourselves accordingly.
Mr. Young?
Yeah, thank you for those comments, Councilmember Middleton, and we'll definitely take that to heart as we look at policy in this area. That will, uh, be concurrent with the comprehensive plan. I think you're exactly right. I, I, I agree with you completely. I guess I would say my, my judgment of when the, when this tool was adopted by a prior council in two thousand and five or two thousand and six, there was a political consensus at the time that neighborhoods having special consideration to prevent, uh, development or redevelopment was, was a good, an unalloyed good. I think there's a, a lot, a greater diversity of opinion on that at this time. So that's exactly what we're, um, examining as staff, looking at best practices across the country, and most importantly, trying, going to be engaging our uh, community members on, um, over the coming, uh, months and, and years. Thank you. You're muted, Mr. Mayor.
I think you said Councilmember Freeman.
Yes, I did. I'm sorry. Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you. I, I just had a couple of questions for Patrick as well. I appreciate, um, Councilmember Middleton, uh, kind of hollowing out the, the kind of where we are in this. And I, I just wanted to ask before I said anything, how many grants does the planning department apply for, um, around this type of work? And how many other communities across the country, um, would actually, uh, look at grants in a planning department? I don't think that's a common thing. I'm just want to be clear before I say that, that it's not, because I figure you have more expertise in that area.
Sure. That, thank you for your question, Councilmember Freeman. Um, we have not applied for grants in, in the area of, um, neighborhood protection overlay, um, assistance or staff support. We have in the past for historic preservation overlays, which are, are very similar, uh, in nature. I have been successful in receiving those, and those have played into getting some of our, uh, local historic districts developed. That's something we could do, but it, as I tried to allude to in my earlier comments, that hasn't been a priority for the department. I think we're looking at, um, trying to promote housing inclusivity, housing access, housing supply, so that our, um, housing affordability crisis doesn't accelerate. So that, that hasn't been a priority area, but it's something we could do. There's very limited resources available, um, in that narrow area in the grant, uh, nonprofit space.
Thank you, Patrick. I, I just wanted to speak as a, as a longtime property owner who has used the tool, um, as far as a local historic district, and recognizing that I'm not a part of the JCCPC, and I'm not hearing the cases that I used to when I was on the Planning Commission. So when I'm coming at this, I'm coming cold, kind of, so to speak. And so it's often, um, there's a long arc on this, on this planning and development work. And I think that folks, uh, have made a good faith effort in trying to make sure to nail down the context around, you know, the color of, um, around, around the redlining that has occurred in the past. And I feel like the miss has been in acknowledging all the work that we're doing, um, with expanded housing choices, with, uh, a variety of other housing choice options, is that without the actual capital to support people not of color to be able to use these, uh, tools, we're not helping the situation. So you're not going to increase housing affordability with more housing. I mean, San Francisco could say they have so much housing. I mean, that didn't change the, the price of rents, and it didn't change the cost of, of living. It's how you're implementing the tools, and I consistently bring this up to the council in these cases around how we're not, not, not constructing the actual tool to impact in the way that we would like. So yes, I appreciate Middleton saying that, uh, Councilmember Middleton saying that if we're not going to do, if we're going to stand in a way of people being able to do NPOs, then we might as well not do them at all. And I, and I really appreciate Ms. Plus in saying that, acknowledging that as a council, this is where we've taken our stand. And we're not supportive of neighborhoods coming forward with their ideas around how their neighborhood should look. That's clear. I, I am, however, concerned as I note that down ninety-eight and down Federal Street, I'm, I'm consistently seeing a shift. And that same shift is the same shift that I was seeing in my neighborhood in East Durham and in South Side, and now seeing in Bragtown. And these considerable shifts are gentrification, and we consider, uh, consistently sit like we're not having impact on those things. And you tell, and the developer can come in and say, well, we're not going to, you know, impact your property. But those things all have impact, and the lasting impact is that black and brown people get displaced. And I, and I consistently push on this aspect because it's not the norm. It is not how you look at development. But if we don't look at development that way, we'll consider, we'll continue to do the same things we've been doing in the name of trying to right the wrong with a, with a neighborhood that's not of color. And it's not working, because I'm going to need the tools like an NPO or a local historic district to save Stokesdale. And I'm going to need the tools like an NPO or a local historic district to save Bragtown. But if we've wiped out every access point that, that anyone in the community has in order to use it, I, I mean, what is the point? And I, and I'm, and I say, I say that all just to make sure that it's I, I just don't think we're where we need to be. And trying to pretend like we are, it just, it just, it just doesn't set, set well with me. And I'm, and I'm consistently trying to find ways to make it clearer to planning staff and to, and to council that we have to do things differently. And we cannot rely on the tools that were created to keep black and brown people out of the development sphere, out of homeownership, out of, you can't rely on those tools and think that it's going to work, just, just making little ticks and changes. This is why urban sprawl is so lucrative right now. I mean, it's cheaper to buy the land in a rural area and then develop the mess out of it so that you have, uh, three hundred and some odd houses. And then bring in all these folks and enforce the city to pay for all the, all the amenities to bring in, the roads, the water, all, I mean, it's, it's just, that's the, that's the dynamic. And if we're not addressing it in a way that's comprehensive, which is, I know we are, we're on our way to that with the comprehensive plan. But in this moment, as we're having these conversations, if we're not acknowledging those dynamics in it, I feel like it's an oversight. And I'm, I'm, I want to be very clear and say that I'm not going to support this NPO, uh, gutting. But I, I understand where it comes from. I appreciate the aspects that are around it and that there should be housing choice. And we want inclusivity, and you want a mix of, of, of housing. But at the same time, I acknowledge that these are the tools that folks in the community are going to need as residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, I'm going to declare this public hearing closed.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Mayor.
We have comments.
Declare this public hearing closing.
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
For the council. And I'll, I'll take a comment first from Councilmember Reese.
Aye.
Then a council, and then a comment from the Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I think the, the conversation that councilmembers Middleton and Freeman are, are putting forward is really important for us to have as a body. I, I will, I will confess that it's difficult for me to connect that with the, with the text amendments that are brought for us today that I think will balance for an improvement of the NPO processes that currently exist in our UDO. Um, and that's why I'll be supporting the revisions to, today. Just point to the comments of, um, of Commissioner Miller, who is perhaps one of the greatest champions of the NPO process, currently sitting on the, on the Planning Commission, uh, and that's the decision that he took. I think he would agree, uh, that the NPO process needs to be revised. And I think we're all looking to the comprehensive plan, uh, project to, to make it clear what our community, community's views are on that. But I think with respect to these particular revisions, uh, I intend to support them. That's all I wanted to say, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I also wanted to express my support for the changes. I think they make the process a lot clearer and solve a lot of the problems, uh, that have come up in the process, not just for the, um, Old West Durham NPO, but also for the Forest Hills NPO with regard to the expectations that people have about the process. The confusion that we had at JCCPC regarding what prioritization is and isn't. These changes do a lot to make the process clearer and, I believe, easier for communities to navigate. So I wanted to express my support and appreciate the staff's work on that. I have a question also for our city attorney as regards the suggestion that we just do away with NPOs completely. Is that something that is, like, is that legally allowed? Or are they something that we're like required to offer?
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, I actually don't know the answer to that question. Don O'Toole, the deputy city attorney, is our land use attorney, and he would probably be able to address that question more, you know, with a more informed. you know, with a more informed answer to the question at all. Would it be okay if I followed up with some complete information about the history of NPOs and what our legal obligations are with respect to them?
That would be fabulous. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, if I might weigh in, Madam Mayor Pro Temp. Not an attorney, but I do know that there's nothing in state law that requires us to have NPOs. Most jurisdictions in North Carolina don't have those. They are authorized, but they're not required. So it would require a UDO text amendment to change, but it's legally permissible.
Thank you.
I just want to comment for a moment as well. We know that in cities nearby us, in Raleigh and Chapel Hill, NPOs have been, they've proliferated, and they've been used to protect neighborhoods from change. They've been used to protect primarily privileged neighborhoods from having the kind of housing options and diversity that I know we all support. And so that's why I think we've been trying to be very careful in Durham when we have instituted NPOs. We've really wanted to make sure that that wasn't the case here, and I think we've been right to be sparing in their application. And I'm glad that we're going to be rethinking them through the comprehensive plan process. I do think that that is really, as Councilmember Middleton said, that really is the issue in front of us. It's, or alluded to, and as Pat said, I think that it's not just the issue of of cost, that's important. But if it was a priority for us, as Councilmember Middleton said, that cost would be something we'd be happy to bear. I think that we are trying to be judicious in the use of the NPO. And we've also got now, as we know from our memo, a new state law that makes it much harder now to even do the kinds of things that our NPOs have historically done because there's much more limitation on the ability to have a zoning of a house that's not one that you own. And so all of these things have come together to make this a good time to think, as we do the comprehensive plan process, about what we want our NPO process to look like and if it remains viable. And so I'm looking forward to that discussion, and I agree that that really is, that's really the issue in front of us. Okay, Councilmember Middleton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you guys hear me? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you, sir. I want to fully associate myself with the comments you just made. Also, I think Councilreese raises a great point. To be clear, I'm supporting the text amendments today. And I think as implied, Corey, was what Council Freeman and I were talking about, what does that implicitly, what does it have to do with the text amendments? And my line of, my statements were occasioned by the staff once again mentioning cost. And my issue is that, because the public is listening to us, that when we are considering whether or not we're going to use the resources on the NPO, that is a fundamentally different questioning, question than us making a judgment based upon the merits or our anticipated merits of any arguments that may be coming in that NPO. That the moment we start talking about cost, the implication, I think a reasonable person listening would be like, oh, they're going to do it just when they can afford it, which takes no off of the tape, which basically means that NPOs will be honored by this council when we have the bandwidth to do them. So there's no real no option for us just when we can afford it. So that's what I was responding to when the staff mentioned cost and resources and bandwidth. But I appreciate, but I am supporting the text amendment. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, I'm sorry, we need a motion, and the motion we need would be to adopt the appropriate consistency statement, would be the first motion as required by NCGS 16383.
So move. Second.
Moved by Councilmember Middleton, seconded by the mayor pro temp. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Shul.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Temp Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Freeman.
May.
Councilmember Middleton.
I vote aye.
Councilmember Reese.
Aye.
And how do we address Councilmember Caballero?
I believe my understanding is that she's just not voting. Is that correct, Madam Attorney?
That's correct. It's a no vote. I mean, it's a non-vote.
A non-vote. So, Madam Clerk, the motion passes four to one. We now need a motion to adopt an ordinance of ending the UDO.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Middleton, seconded by Councilmember Reese. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Shul.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Temp Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Freeman.
May.
Councilmember Middleton.
I vote aye.
Councilmember Reese.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. This also passes four to one. And now I believe we need a motion to go into closed session per the the recommendation of the city attorney. Madam Attorney, is there anything else we need to do? Do we need to hear some special language from you around that?
If you would like me to read the motion, I will, as we sometimes do at work session.
Sure, that'd be great.
The motion is to hold a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3 for attorney-client consultation concerning the handling and/or settlement of pending claims.
Thank you. You've heard the attorney's recommendation. Can I have a motion that we go into closed session?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Middleton, seconded by Councilmember Reese, that we go into closed session. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Shul.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Temp Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Freeman.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
I vote aye.
Councilmember Reese.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The motion passes unanimously, five to nothing. We'll now be moving into closed session.
If you'll pause for a moment?